Good afternoon. Today is December 13th, 2010. We are beginning the Historic Preservation Commission -- or Historic Preservation Commission meeting, the last of 2010. And we find ourselves without a chair, so the commissioners will have to nominate and vote for a chair pro tem before we can begin.
I'd like to nominate Frayj Mardian to be chair for today.
My second.
Okay. We're gonna roll call. Okay, Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Okay, the board at three, zero.
I move over to...
For Mr. Mardian to be pro...
Yes.
...tem of today.
Okay. Where you ready? Please.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon all. This is the special meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. The time is 2:08, and we'll start the meeting. Roll call please. Uh, sorry, before I get there. The agenda of this hearing was posted on or before Thursday, I believe, and was posted on City Hall. Anybody with disability act will can request an auxiliary device.
Okay, in terms of roll call, yes.
Roll call.
Commissioner Amadian, who's absent today. Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Shire?
Here.
Commissioner Vidor?
Here.
And Chairman Pro Tem Mardian.
Here.
Thank you.
Report regarding this posting of the agenda. The agenda was posted on or before Tuesday, December 7th, 2010, on the bulletin board of City Hall. Item three, approval of minutes, October 25, 2010, regular.
Yes, the minutes are right in front of you.
The only comment I had, not material, but page four, item eight A, there should be a space between 1333 and on the...
1333, space in between.
Eight A?
Eight A.
And where's the space?
Between the address of 1333.
Oh, isn't there?
No.
Not on ours.
Oh, on mine there is.
Oh.
Someone got to that.
There you go.
Psychically.
So, is there any...
I have a possible correction. On eight D, where we discussed the content and format of our special meeting that we're planning to have for the outreach to the public, I thought we had agreed, or maybe we didn't agree, but we discussed what each commissioner would focus on at the meeting, and everybody had a particular topic, and since that probably is the essence of the meeting, should that not be reflected in these minutes?
We're gonna be going over that tonight, today, to finalize it, but your -- these are action minutes, so it's kind of getting complicated.
So you'll remind us.
Yeah, well, we'll be going back through that.
I think it was there.
It was there, but Arlene's wasn't there.
Arlene's.
Really?
Your focus, like the second page.
Oh, it's true, we have Commissioner Shire and Mardian.
Oh, you mean it is, it is there, but I'm...
But not yours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, but mine's left off, so that's even worse.
That's why you noticed, so...
Okay.
Okay, when we kind of do that at the end of the meeting, we'll cover all of that and try to do a little more brainstorming, so...
Sure.
I had one thing I wanted to add, one C, seven C, 1770 Landview. I think I also mentioned, aside from the transactions that occurred in business with Mr. Vannesian prior to the hearing, which was 12 months, the main reason I stated also was that I, on several occasions, I asked him to bring that application forward.
Right.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the...
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Second, okay. Okay, the motion made by Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Chairman Pro Tem Mardian?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Mardian, your thoughts about having told the applicant, no, you should apply for the Glendale Register. That alone, I don't think would lead to a recusal, but we've already had the discussion that it's probably best for commissioners in general not to give applicants the idea that, you know, you're supporting a nomination before we actually see it, so...
Do pull.
That's good.
October 25th.
Thank you. If it was the last time, I'll do it.
Okay. Until the next time.
Item four, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. See if anybody for oral communication. I don't see anyone for oral communication. We'll close the oral communication period.
Okay.
We'll move on to item five, comments from commissioners. Any comments?
These general comments, or anything comments?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to mention that I did take a tour of the Van de Kamp's new campus, and it's a historic bakery building that has been adaptively reused, and it's going for gold certification as a LEED certified building, and I just would encourage anybody to get over there and look at it if you possibly can, because it's really a wonderful project. And they've done some pretty amazing things with that old bakery building, and also added modern contemporary architecture to the campus, too, which blends beautifully with the old building.
Just remind everyone where that is?
Oh.
In Los Angeles.
Yes, it's in Los Angeles, not very...
On Fletcher.
It's on Fletcher, right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time or not. It's concerning the property that is right next to the Golden Key Hotel. It's on the Glendale Historical Society website. It's the Mission Revival Building. And I just want to know what our -- I'll read what it says that was written by our illustrious commissioner for the Mission Revival Building at 2:30 South Orange. Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, you can raise it as an issue, we can't discuss it.
Right, I just, I would like to know what our purview as far as this property. Anyway, it said 2:30 South Orange, circa 1940. The 75,000 square foot gem wedged between the Americana brand and the Golden Key Hotel was once a recording studio, is now for lease. Looking for a restaurant tenant. Mission revival is a very rare style for a Glendale commercial building. It features cap buttresses and curved mission parapet and bowstring truss roof. I'd just like to know what, basically what our purview is on properties that don't come in front of us, but we're trying to save certain buildings in the Glendale Business District, and whether we have any say-so in it or...
Yeah, the commission's purview extends only to buildings that are either designated or located in a historic district, so as a commission, we have no purview over this. If the environmental review process leads to an identification that it's a historic structure, the commission may have some advisory role in that, but I'm not sure that that would necessarily happen.
Our environmental planner, Eric Kraus, is here.
Regarding, during the environmental review process, we don't typically take it to any board of commission that doesn't have an authority over the approvals. But I mean, if there's environmental review done on the project or the building, then if during the public comment period, anybody can make a comment towards the environmental document at that time. So whether you're on the commission or not, as a citizen or a commission, you can make a comment towards that on the environmental document.
Right.
And the commissioners can always comment as private citizens.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I have no comments. We'll move on. Item six, old business. A commission review vote regarding proposed changes to the city's Mills Act application... Oh, sorry, changes to the city Mills Act program to be initiated in 2010, pending city council review and approval.
I've prepared a one-page sheet for everyone to go over that basically summarizes the discussion we've had over the last six months, talking about various changes we might make to the Mills Act program. We discussed this with the city attorney, and this is a policy change that needs to go to city council. And there were a few kind of things that hadn't quite been completely tied up in terms of timing and certain other issues when we discussed this. So I wanted to bring it back to the commission. Our plan is to go to council in January, pending the discussion today if we're in agreement on all of these items. So A, I wanted to make sure that this reflects your memory of our discussions, that I didn't leave anything out, and then also I've highlighted areas where we, where there was some question about how we might do the timing of things. So I'll run through this for the benefit of everyone in the audience, and then we can discuss the items one by one when I'm finished. We had talked about establishing a lag time of about a year between the designation of a property on the Glendale Register and its eligibility to receive the Mills Act property tax reduction. This was based on the precedent of other cities that were finding that it was useful in terms of preventing kind of people from flipping houses and using the Mills Act as a marketing tool, rather than out of legitimate concern and love of the historic character of their property. So when we voted for that, we hadn't really thought about, oh, how, what does that mean in terms of how do we initiate it? The Mills Act applications are only processed once a year, in December of each year. They need to be recorded by December 31st, and then they're forwarded to the assessor's office, which begins its reassessment in spring, and then typically the October or the fall tax bill is where the property owner receives their tax reduction. I came up with two possible options of how we could do this. Obviously, you may have other thoughts. The first would be that we would kind of establish a very firm period during which we accept Mills Act applications. We have that as kind of a guideline right now, more to reduce staff workload at the end of the year. Because we haven't had so many Mills Act applications, frankly, we're taking things up through November that we're able to process. What this would do is establish June 30th as a cutoff date. So basically, all applications received between July 1st of one year and June 30th of the next year would be eligible to be processed for that given year. It would then be processed in December, and the owner would receive the tax reduction in the fall. So that would mean there'd be about a year plus from the time that they're approved to the time that they would get the reduction. And this would be, city council would also have to vote, so the whole process would have to be complete by June 30th. So we'll, if this is the choice of the commission, we'll definitely make it clear in the application what the timing is and what the optimal time to apply would be. A second option would be that contracts approved within a calendar year will be recorded at the end of the following year, leading to a tax reduction in the second calendar year after initial approval. This kind of expands the duration up to two-plus years. It's not exactly what the commission talked about, but I put it in there because it kind of followed kind of the discussion, more or less. So those are the two options I've come up with, and let me know if you have others during your discussion. We also are going to ask council that we require building inspections and termite reports at the time of application and periodically afterwards. We didn't really set up that period when we were talking about it. Realistically, I think five years is probably a decent period of time where things might have changed during that period. It's not waiting too long, but it's not too soon. We don't want to put a huge burden on the owners on this, but I left open the possibility of other options. The commission asks staff to develop a correlation between the building inspectors form, which tends to be very technical, talking about systems and materials, but not necessarily about historic features and issues. The best way that I can figure out how this would work right now is that I would have to do that kind of based on each inspection until we develop a format that might work on more, more properties as a group. So I think we'd have to leave that a little indeterminate, but that would be kind of our in-house policy and something we'd use based on, or alongside the building inspections. If a project or a property comes to us for a new application, we would have the owners verify that it's either bolted or strapped to the foundation. If it isn't, we would possibly, you know, this, this one probably has options if you want to consider, but I think we had talked about conditioning that work as part of the Mills Act contract. I think that should be done fairly quickly after designation, so I put in within a year of entering into the contract, but that's open for discussion. Another option, or another issue would be that we are going to require a site plan for each property, so that we have a clear plan of exactly how the property is laid out, what kind of outbuildings there are, what kind of perimeter conditions there are, and this has to be prepared by an architect or a surveyor. And then this would also be used to key our photographs that we're going to request, where we're going to put the burden of getting excellent documentation from the owners, which has been kind of a, not as strict as it could be in the past. So what we'd like is to make sure that every portion of the property is photographed, it's keyed to the site plan, and then we're going to use that document for periodic inspections, where instead of staff having to go out to the property, we're going to ask the owners to submit new photographs taken from exactly the same vantage points shown on the site plan. And that was an issue that we hadn't really finalized in terms of timing. Two thoughts that I had, and of course there are others, we could do that every five years, and we would establish dates in the Mills Act contract, so it would be clear when those photographs were due. Five years seems a little long. A lot of cities try to inspect their Mills Act properties on an annual or biannual basis, but very few cities actually do that, in my experience. But since we're putting the burden on the owners, one thought would be to do it twice every five years, so that we're kind of on this five-year cycle with the other reports, and then have an interim period of photographs that would, might come at the two-and-a-half year point. Because we have all of the buildings flagged in our permit tracking system, once, once a building is designated, it gets what's called a hard hold, which means no one at the counter, or my colleagues in my department can't issue a permit without that hold being removed, and very few people have access to removing that hold, it makes me a little less worried that we're going to have significant amounts of illegal work done. I'm sorry, that's, we won't have significant amounts of permitted work done, but we still may have illegal work done, so I want to leave that for your discussion in terms of how often we should refotograph the properties. And that's, that's everything that I had from my notes.
Thank you very much, Jay. Any comments or...
Well, I had a comment about your second bullet point, the building inspection. Do we need to have some verbiage about implementation if things are discovered in that, that we have, you know, the right to?
Yeah, I think for, because the requirement for the first one is that it come at the time of application, so that will give the commission the chance to see what the report has in it, and then to condition work as part of the Mills Act based on whatever timeline seems appropriate.
What about every five years? If it's happening every five years and then there's work identified?
Exactly, yeah. We can't go back and redo the contract, so we would have to come up, we'd have to work with the city attorney's office to come up with some kind of other document, I guess, that would hold owners to the...
Do we need some verbiage in this as part of the policy?
Yeah, I think I'll add something here to make that clear, and before we go to city council, I'll check with the attorneys to see if, how that might work. But I do know, we can't go back and amend, I don't think we can go back and amend the initial contract, so...
On number one, let me just review a hypothetical, just to make sure I understand what the timing is. So let's say hypothetically, between June, rather, July of 2010 and June of 2011, the person makes application, so the, and gets their house landmarked. So then the Mills Act application would go in in the fall of 2012? Or 2011?
Yeah, the Mills Act application would still be concurrent, so the commission and the council would be approving the Mills Act, just as you do now. Then we would wait till, as we do now, till December. This ultimately isn't...
It's the main year.
This isn't that different than our current process.
Okay.
For people who apply early in the year, for people who've been coming at the very tail end of things.
Right, then they shift...
We have situations where council approves the Mills Act in November, and by the following October, they have their reduction already. So this would slow it down a little bit.
Okay, so it, so things shift up a year if they come in during the second half?
Yeah, a year or more, depending, because it's kind of a sliding schedule.
Yeah, I prefer that one.
Number one?
Yes, and that's it. I don't think I...
Just a question, Jay, how long is it taking now from initial application until you get, has it taken a year to get your Mills Act?
It depends when, when the application's in, if someone's...
Average, how long does it take from, I mean, is it takes a year, it takes a year and a half?
It takes eight months from when we have the document recorded to the property tax reduction the following fall. That's because we record them all at the same time. Some of those applicants have been on the register since January, possibly, and some have only been on since November. So this would push everyone back earlier in the year.
I'm willing to go with number one.
Okay.
I concur.
I concur also.
Okay, we have agreement. How about the second item?
Five years seems fine.
Yeah, I concur also. Doesn't seem onerous.
With the commission's permission, I still don't, I can't quite visualize exactly what this correlation is going to look like, so when we actually get a building inspection in, I'll run that as kind of a test case, and we can all work on that together.
We can work on a chart of some sort, defining...
That's what I'm picturing, and most building inspections seem to, because we're going to be requiring that these be certified building inspectors, who are certified through one of the boards that does that. A lot of the reports seem like they follow a very similar format, so once we kind of know that that's true, we'll just follow along.
Are you proposing reconfiguring the inspection report so it's more user-friendly, or actually adding things?
This will be additional.
Okay.
This will be our interpretation, so that when, when the inspection report says there's a problem with the roof, we'll say, well, this is a Spanish colonial revival, so it needs to have tile roof replacement, and then we'll think if there was potential for any water damage that might affect features that the commission...
Seems like, seems like the district guidelines would kind of lead us to pick the right things to put in there.
Yeah, it kind of brings it out. This, this will be for Glendale Register properties, though, so...
Okay, so are we yes on that?
Yes.
Next item?
Okay, this one, one year...
One year's fine, because that's the most important part of the process.
You could make it less, even.
No, one year's fine.
Yeah, year goes by fast.
By the time they get a contractor, price it out and all that.
All right, that's very nice.
Only for a while.
So the work completed in a year, or...
Oh, yeah, we were, yeah, we would establish the date for that, so...
Yes.
The site plan? I think we should, I've always said it, I think we should have some sort of a site plan, because only few applications we've received that had a site plan. And just for me, for the, it's easier to, you know, keep track of it.
Yeah, it will help, as, you know, these are going to be listed for decades to come, so we'll have kind of a long-term series of records at some point, so...
I think that one and the next one with the photograph, they go together, pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay, yes on both those.
I agree.
Unanimous?
Yeah.
How about the inspection?
And this only applies to designations starting in 2011. We can't go back to our existing owners, unfortunately, and ask them to do this?
All this, yes.
Yeah, but especially, especially this one with the inspections. Well, still, we do not at this point have a program for staff inspection of properties. We could offer this as a voluntary thing for existing Mills Act contractees, but right now, we don't know.
Instead of every five years, which may be a little long, rather than say twice every five years, just make it a shorter time, like every three years, or every, you know, two and a half.
Cut it down and just then...
Just cut it down, and say every X years from the date of approval.
The only reason I put five years is because we're on kind of a five-year cycle with the other reports. It just seemed like it might be easier so people remember and we remember, and, but...
Okay, you don't think that's too long?
No, I just put that down, it's fairly random.
Okay, I'll defer to the other commissioners.
Twice in five years is fine with me.
I, I agree, five years is...
Twice in five years.
Five years is too long.
Yeah.
Okay, and what we'll do is that those dates will be laid out in, in the initial contract, and then, you know, I guess we can't go to infinity, but we'll do something reasonable, so...
Okay. We're all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll bring this to council with these recommendations. We'll talk to the city attorney's office first, make sure everything makes sense to them, and we're set.
You need to take a vote on this, Jay?
Um, yes, since we're going to council, let's do that.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
So, roll call will be, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Vidor?
Yes.
And Chair Pro Tem Mardian?
Yes.
Poured it forward, two, zero.
Okay, six B, please. Consideration of Commissioner generated proposals for future discussion regarding HPC policies and goals.
And this is our running kind of discussion item list. I didn't prepare one for today because we have such a, you know, two, two big items on the agenda, and we also had the thought that since we're having our special meeting in January, that would be a good time for us to actually kind of lay out, you know, these are the things in the coming year that the commission plans to talk about, have that agendized and open for discussion from the people who are in the audience and interested in this process. And at that point, I'll incorporate all of the things that were added to the list or seconded on the list at the last meeting, and each one will kind of, as a commission, you'll kind of give feedback in terms of priorities, which should we schedule first, which might take longer time, which might take a shorter time, and kind of do that in this kind of nice public forum where everyone will see this, the forward-thinking nature of HPC.
In addition to that, if I may, I don't know if it's the right place to talk about, can a commissioner for these discussions items that have been seconded, and we're going to discuss it, provide pictures or some illustration to show the commission what specific item is?
You mean at the, at the meeting, once we have it agendized?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah. We could put it in the, in the staff presentation, so that it's up online and everyone has...
If anyone has, you know, something to discuss, maybe we'll help preserve...
Yeah, sometimes we will, sometimes we won't, so...
Okay. And that's all on that? Anybody? Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to seven, new business, which is item A, proposed Brockmont Park Historic District Preliminary Review of Nomination.
Okay, today, today we have another historic district coming through the process, and as we've done in the past, we're trying to expand our staff's knowledge and abilities within the Historic Preservation Program. Eric Kraus actually has a lot of experience working in this over the years, and he's volunteered to take on Brockmont Park, so we'll be working together on this with the applicants and other staff members as needed, and so Eric will present today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The Planning Division received an application for a historic overlay district comprised of 58 properties in the Brockmont Park neighborhood. The area encompasses, encompassed within the proposed district corresponds to the southern portion of the area laid out and developed as tract number 9152, which is known as Brockmont Park. That was subdivided by the Home Realty Company beginning in 1926. The tract was developed from a former 140-acre estate of John Brockman. The proposed district is generally bounded by the north, by Kenneth Road, on the west side by Merriam Drive, on the east by Valley View Road, and on the north by Cumberland Road. Other streets included within the proposed boundaries are Lawson Place and Arbor, Arbor Drive.
The screen?
Oh, there you go. There we go. That's the tract map 9152, and the proposed boundaries are shown in red. Excuse me. The district designation process outlined in the city's Historic District Ordinance requires that the Historic Preservation Commission review the application and make a preliminary determination regarding the area's eligibility as a historic district. This is not a final determination or a recommendation, is only the judgment that the area appears to meet at least one of the nine criteria established by the ordinance. If the commission makes an affirmative determination, it then authorizes district proponents to circulate a petition among property owners within the boundaries, and requesting this city conduct a historic resource survey for the proposed historic district. The petition must be signed by at least 50% of the property owners to proceed. In addition to accessing the nomination with regard to the eligibility criteria, planning staff also considers the apparent appropriateness of the district boundary, period of significance, and name proposed by the applicants, and staff also visits the proposed district boundaries to make a preliminary visual estimation of the level of alterations to the properties that could affect the potential district's eligibility, and meeting the 60% of district's properties to be considered contributors. The proposed, the applicant's proposed boundary consists of the southern portion of Brockmont Park subdivision. The terrain in this area slopes generally up towards a steeper hillside portion of the development, and that is not included as part of the nomination. This geographic change creates the northern boundary of the proposed district. So on, on the map, your, properties that would be included are on both the north and eligibility in, in meeting the 60% of district's properties to be considered contributors. The proposed, the applicant's proposed boundary consists of the southern portion of Brockmont Park subdivision. The terrain in this area slopes generally up towards a steeper hillside portion of the development, and that is not included as part of the nomination. The, this geographic change creates the northern boundary of the proposed district. So on, on the map, your, properties that would be included are on both the north and south sides of Cumberland, that's in between Merrim Drive and Valley View, and also kind of the northerly and southerly ports of Arbor, and then the north and south side of Lawson, the north side of Kensington, and then the east and west sides of Merrim, and east and west sides of Valley View as well. The streets within the proposed boundary are also notable for the mature trees that line the parkways with different species associated with different streets as well as tall, slender streetlight standards which appear to be unique in Glendale. There's also a lack of paved sidewalks producing a more suburban character. Two structures within the proposed boundary are listed within, on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. Those include the Brockman Clock Tower and the Brower House. I hope I got that right. Located at 321 Lawson Place. Staff believes that the proposed boundary is appropriate for the proposed district. Since its inception as a residential neighborhood, the area encompassed by the proposed district has been known as Brockmont Park. Historic tracks and development names are generally seen as the most appropriate names for historic districts when they correspond to the boundary of a proposed district, which is generally the case for Brockmont Park. Staff believes that the proposed name is also appropriate for the district. The applicant has proposed a period of significance from 1926 to 1956, so this period ranges between the initial subdivision in 1926 through the completion of the last ranch-style houses in 1956. So each of the 58 properties in the proposed districts are within this period of significance. The properties developed in the 1950s are thought to be directly tied to the historic development pattern of the neighborhood, since many of them were built on the development's last pieces of open land to be subdivided, which were private park and also the former gardens at the foot of the Brockman house. The applicant has submitted an application, with the application, a location of where they think that the proposed Mike, proposed private park might have been located, which is shown in the slide above. The applicant who prepared the nomination meets the Secretary of Terriers Standards for Architectural History and is therefore qualified to assess contributor status. The applicant found that 90% of the properties are contributing structures. The historic district overlay zone requires that at least 60% be contributors. So even if some of the existing properties were to be lost or altered prior to designation, it does appear likely that the district would meet their requirements for 60% contributors. So staff believes that the district is highly likely to meet the requirements of the number of contributing structures. There's a couple of photos we have here that came along with the application that show a couple of articles or just advertisements that were in the Los Angeles Times. The top one just says that's a $150,000 park for your exclusive use at Brockman Park, which assumes that the, it was a private park as part of the development. And then also the heading, it looks like, I guess that's an advertisement, I'm not really sure about that one. It says, "The estate of late John Brockman, well-known pioneer of Los Angeles," and it advertises "Fine Hilltop Residence and Furnishings and Additions." There's a location of Brockmart that's circa 1914.
If I, if I can throw something in here, thanks, thanks to Francesca Smith, who is our Secretary of the Interior Qualified Architectural Historian on this. For years, the city has listed 1920 as the date for the Brockman Clock Tower, and Ms. Smith found documentation that it dates to at least 1914, so we've changed that in our official records and, and there you have it, so.
And this is an aerial view of the Brockman estate as well. You can see where the Merriman, Valley View, Lawson, and Cumberland are located. And then really quickly, there's a couple of photographs of some of the residents that are located in the neighborhood. These are examples of Monterey Revival-style residents. There's a couple of examples of a Spanish colonial revival. There's some colonial revival-style residences. And a sample of the Tudor Revival style. And then the top one is a minimum and traditional-style residence, and there's not a whole lot of those in the, in the proposed district, I think there's maybe one, two, a couple of them. And then the, and the bottom ones show example of a ranch-style residence. There's a couple more samples of ranch-style. So as I mentioned earlier, the, in order for the district to meet historic overlay zone requirements, has to meet one of nine criterion that's outlined in the district ordinance. Criterion A, which we believe in the applicant also does, it meets the criteria A, which exemplifies or reflects special elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, aesthetic, engineering, architectural, natural history. Under criterion B, staff's interpretation of the project does not meet criterion B, which is identify with persons or events significant in local, state, or national history. We believe it meets criteria C, which embodies distinctive characteristics of a style, type, or method of construction, or is a valuable example of use of indigenous materials or craftsmanship. We believe it does not meet criterion D, which is represents the work of notable builders, designers, architects. And under criteria E, we believe does not meet that as well, that has a, criteria E is, has a unique location or is a view of, or vista representing established or familiar visual feature of a neighborhood community or of the city. Criteria F, we believe it does not meet that one as well, which is embodies a collection of elements of architectural detail, or, excuse me, design detail, materials, or craftsmanship that represent a significant structure or architectural achievement or innovation. Under criteria G, we, or, yeah, we believe it does meet that criteria, so it reflects significant geological, geographic.
Geography.
Whoops. That is not the right word, is it? Patterns including those associated with different eras of settlement and growth, transportation modes, or distinctive examples of park or community planning. We believe it meets criteria H, which is, conveys a sense of history, historic or architectural cohesiveness throughout its design, setting, materials, workmanship, and association. We believe it does not meet criteria I, which is, has been designated on historic district in the National Register of Historic Places or California Register of Resources, which it hasn't been listed, so that's why it doesn't meet that criteria. So we believe, staff believes that it meets four of the nine required criteria. That completes my presentation and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I want to appreciate your report today. You've done a thorough report. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any comments or questions, staff, before we open the public hearing?
No.
No? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Francesca Smith.
Hi, thanks for having us. Do I need to say my address or anything?
Yes, please.
Francesca Smith, 324 Lawson Place, the Lower Ranch-style house.
Okay.
Staff has done such a good job of wrapping this up. You all probably read the very endless application. I assume you all have read it and, you know, already evaluated things on your own. You see, we have at least 10 homeowners here and various others who wanted to be here and couldn't be here. We're all thrilled about this neighborhood, so we, we hope you find it to meet those four criteria that were well-described by Mr. Kraus. And I can answer questions if you'd like.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. What's the story on, I think it's number 31 in the list. It's a Tudor Revival house on, on Year Street, I believe, Lawson, and it is apparently in a state of, it looks like it was at one time an intact, Vandecamp, no, not Vandecamp. It's a Tudor revival, not Dutch revival.
That's okay, I know what you're talking about.
And it looks like it's being stripped of some of its architectural features, so I just wondered if we had a status report on that or knew if that project was permitted or...
Thankfully, thankfully, we're aware of what's going on there, because when you look at it today, you can sort of see straight through it. All, all of the work on the house is permitted. There's going to be a major renovation, there'll be new windows, some new cladding, new roof put on the house, and obviously, a lot of interior work. What we discovered, working with the applicant, the owner of that property, is that the existing kind of Tudor cladding was kind of a second generation of facade treatment. It was applied over the original facade. And what we've done is work with the applicant, the house is still going to retain a very distinct, a very noticeable Tudor Revival style, some of the quirky features of the house, which I don't know if you noticed when you were there, but where you see the half timbering on the existing house, where the wood is set into the stucco, that's only on the portions of the house that face forward to the street. So even if you make a 90-degree turn on a return, the wood, half timbering goes away and there are painted lines that represent half timbering. There's also painted half timbering on the east facade, which is the problem, the side facade that's most visible from the street. It's very unusual, very quirky. We can tell that that is not the original condition of the house, but the shape and the overall roofscape and form of the house suggests that it was originally Tudor Revival house. So the, the plan that's been approved by staff is going to retain all of the Tudor Revival characteristics. In our opinion, it's going to, if, if all goes as planned, it's going to be a very handsome renovation to the house. The question that we have at this point is, will it be a contributor or not? And we will wait until we see how the work is done, because having, having, having alterations to a house doesn't necessarily mean it's not a contributor, but if we're losing a lot of historic fabric, it may open up some questions. So we'll be working with the community and the consultant in making that determination. Even if it were to lose its non, its contributing status, there are so many, such a high percentage of contributors in the neighborhood, the district would still, you know, be a district.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Commissioner Vidor, I was going to bring the same thing.
It's pretty, pretty evident, yeah.
I have another one, actually. The one that, the work has been going on, but I'll ask those questions. Thank you very much later.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question for you, but you may, you may need to correct it. I wanted to thank you for providing us the list. This list is excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. There are probably typos.
Yeah, there's a few.
It's really helpful.
It was very helpful, keying it to the photographs.
Very good.
And I want to thank also Mr. Kraus for putting the addresses of all the properties. I think that's a new, great new addition.
If we can, just don't, don't get your expectations up that you'll see that on every application. Because Francesca meets the Secretary's standards, we let that go, but we wouldn't, if, if an applicant came in and said what's a contributor and what's not, we would take that out of the application before you saw it, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
It's a special case here.
But there's some few discrepancies.
Some typos. I'll work on those with my neighbor's help.
I'll bring you those up a little later in our discussion.
You can leave it to Commissioner Mardian to find typos in her report.
Oh, great.
Very good at that.
I tell you.
I, I will say it was really a highly reviewable, you know, reviewability, whether you like something or not, is so important when you're trying to make decisions, so it's always nice to read something that's highly reviewable and easy to look at.
Okay. Any other question? We'll move on. I have another speaker. I may butcher this last name. I'll go with Richard. Liebov? Thank you, Mr. Liebov.
Yes. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Richard Liebov. I'm a 31-year resident of Glendale and I reside at 1615 Arbor Drive. And I am the owner of one of the photos that was shown, the Monterey Revival. That was built in about 1927. I'm delightfully, actually surprised. I knew Francesca was the person who specialized in doing this type of work, but it was only more recently that we found out that she was in the process of submitting an application. And it was, we were happy, those of us on Arbor Drive, to see in fact that she modified the application to include us, which we of course are, are very grateful for because having a historical district, as those of you, those here know, is something relatively new to Glendale and something that we all now have come to appreciate and something that is long overdue. And it is due to the efforts of some very good people in Glendale who have brought that to the attention of the council in, in recent years. I don't think we can ever have enough historical districts in our jewel city. We are far behind, as everyone knows, of other cities in the area, namely Pasadena and, and others. And we have a lot to catch up in terms of having historical districts in order to preserve the good architectural features that we do have in our homes and that those homes not be altered in any significant way that is going to diminish the value of these homes. Unfortunately, we've seen much of that happen in recent years. And those of us who walk the streets are often appalled at some of the things that have been done and continue to be done because there is not enough staff resources to control some of these things in our city. And those of my, like persons like myself, take note of these things as, as we walk the streets. In fact, I, I would propose to you, and I, I hope someday the council will see fit to have Snoop-type persons, if you will, like myself, who go around the streets and, and find these atrocities that people do to their, their properties. In fact, we have a few of those in our neighborhood and we're, we're not too happy with those, naturally. But I, once again, I cannot say enough to commend Francesca for starting this process and I hope it moves along expeditiously through the various channels. One thing I would add in closing too, as I hope I have not met the new owner of the clock tower house, but since I do reside close to it and can see it from my backyard very clearly, I've noticed that in the evening now, the owner is putting lights on it, but I hope he does, or the family does restore the clock tower and the bells and so forth and then the, the clock itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have no other speakers. We'll close the public hearing. I mean, the public portion of it. Anybody wants to start? Or questions first, or any comments?
I'd just like to say to the homeowners, thank you for bringing this forward. It's a beautiful part of Glendale and has some of my favorite Spanish colonial revival homes along the Cumberland Road. And I walk, walk those streets or run them often and just thank you for all the effort put into this report. It's very thorough.
Thank you, Commissioner Shire. Commissioner Morgan?
I would like to say the same thing to Francesca Smith. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. It was, I spent an enjoyable afternoon yesterday walking, I must have walked it three or four times. And though I've been past it many times because my friends lived on Cleveland, I never really took the chance to actually go up and see your beautiful area. So it's just, I'm really pleased that you've nominated it and I hope it goes all the way through.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Vidor?
Well, ditto for me too. And I was a lazy bum and drove all over the place. And then I could have walked it because I ended up driving each street maybe five times because I wanted to go back and continue to look at the houses. But they're all really beautiful. What I love about the neighborhood is that wonderful European revival houses really show pieces, but also the ranch era is very, it has a certain cohesiveness that's very charming, that you, you know, sometimes the ranches are all over the place architecturally, but there's quite a bit of cohesiveness there. So it's really a very charming, beautiful neighborhood and it's very exciting. So thank you all.
Thank you. I have a few questions and I want to thank also the applicant and echo all the comments that have been made. I thank you for bringing part of Kenneth, piece of the Kenneth at least. I've been waiting for that and I think we're moving into that direction. Although it's only like five homes off of Kenneth, but Kenneth needs the protection more than anything else. Due to the fact that the application has high contributors, although that's the question I have, you might want to check your chart and coordinate it with the pictures, couple of them in the picture says not contributors. But with, based on what I read, you have 40 properties that are high integrity, which is one of the highest ones we've seen. And I just want you to correct one more thing. I don't want you to go through the photographs. Photograph number 35 should be 329 Kenneth, not Lawson.
Photograph 30.
35?
Oh, yes.
But one question to staff, why couldn't we make criteria B due to the relation of John Brockman?
Staff feels that because Brockman was dead before this neighborhood was developed, that he personally did not have any, any, you know, foreknowledge unless we learned something different than that. If we learned that this was his dream and his vision and he happened to die before it was met, then we might reconsider that. But based on what we had in the nomination, we didn't feel there was any connection the way we could make with Alex Nibley and even Judge Ross for, for Rossmoyn. We, we try, you know, just as we do with the Glendale Register designations, we try to keep a pretty high bar for when we're gonna use some of these criteria.
Those restrictions that were in place before the development, that didn't, was not part of his?
I, I can't say for sure. We, we could definitely work with the applicants to, to see if there is a connection. We're, we're happy to add another criterion if, if it makes sense.
I think the Brockman Tower is a famous tower and it's, that area's been named Brockman Hills based on our maps. I think we may be able to do it, but again, I'll leave it open. You can do the research, the application's coming back.
We'll talk, we'll talk. We'll talk.
Thank you. Yeah, what is it? I came up with eight non-contributors, just for correction's sake. Not six.
That's not the commission's position to do that, so.
But thank you again. And with that, I'm very excited to see another district, especially like Commissioner Shire said, beautiful Spanish. And one of my favorites is the Monterey Revival. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Shire has to speak? Can I second? Oh, where's the motion? I'd be happy to read it, but.
Yeah, I move to, based on the preliminary review, to nominate the Brockman Park as a historic district.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, Chairperson Protam Mardian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes four to zero.
And that, and that motion was to, to indicate that the commission believes it appears to meet the criteria? Okay.
Yes. Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another motion on that? Authorization of proponent issue petition request in historic survey? Second part?
Yeah, that, we, we break it into two parts because if you didn't feel it met the first part, then that part would be kind of moot. But they go hand in hand generally. But you, you may as well vote on it since we're there.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Chair Protam Mardian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes four to zero.
Good luck. Beginning of the process. There are long ways to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing it up.
Congratulations on getting to this point.
Okay.
Wow, what a quirk we are.
Thank you. Thank you for.
Have a nice holiday. Bye, guys.
The next exciting portion of the hearing.
This ought to be really exciting.
This is why you're in charge. You have experience.
Oh, yeah, right.
Now, who, who gave this one? I mean, show you who.
That's.
Who gave this one?
Really?
Is it Jay?
Mine has a different drawing on it.
Yeah, it's Jay.
Thank you very much. Where's the makeup artist?
You need, you need like a makeup and, and wardrobe person.
That's the color, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on. Do we, anybody wants to take a break or should we move on?
Let's go forward.
All right, let's go forward. Thank you. We're doing a good time so far today. Okay. Thank you. We'll go into the agenda. What happened?
Seven C.
I lost my agenda.
Oh.
Okay.
Around C.
Seven C. 1459 East Mountain Street Design Review Board for proposed new construction in Royal Boulevard Historic District.
Mr. Mardian, before we begin this item, I'd like to make a few comments if the commissioner will indulge me. It's actually a significant day that you're hearing this item and that this is the first time the Historic Preservation Commission is reviewing as the design review authority a project in an adopted historic district. So we know this day was gonna come at some point when we adopted the historic districts initially a year, year and a half ago, and now we're seeing the first project in front of you. So I just didn't want to let that moment go by without kind of acknowledging it. And also, I think it's illustration that historic districts are not about freezing places and time, that life evolves in historic districts. And so you'll be playing a new role for you in this hearing. I also wanted to outline a few, just kind of preliminary comments about your authority here because you are functioning in a slightly different fashion than when you are, say, reviewing Glendale Register nominations. And to say that your authority is the design review body overseeing this property is outlined in the same chapter that governs design review authority for the design review board, redevelopment agency, and in some cases, city staff when we have the opportunities to function out, or given the authority to function as design review body. So that's chapter 3047, is that right, Stephanie? Of the code. And because this is the first time review, you are limited in the number of, the kind of action you can take following your discussion, deliberation this afternoon. You basically have three choices. You can approve the project, in which case you're happy with everything you see and the project moves forward and is ready to go into plan check. You can approve with conditions. If you approve with conditions, you are delegating any kind of outstanding issues to the city staff to work with the applicant. You will not see the project again. And so it's important that if you approve with conditions, that you're very clear in what your conditions would be, very specific so that there's no ambiguity between the city staff and the applicants as to what they're, everyone's expected to mean. That's one of the reasons Ms. Reich is here to help us navigate that process. She's been very good about getting the DRB to be very specific about their architectural intentions when they approve with conditions. You also have the option today, as you hear this, to vote return for redesign, in which case you're saying that the project is, got enough issues with it that you're not comfortable delegating the resolution of those issues to the city staff. Project needs to come back to you to see. If you vote return for redesign, when the project returns, you basically can approve, approve with conditions or deny the project. You only have two opportunities to see the project before the applicant has, should you get approval or a denial. If, in either case of either an approval or a denial, a party that's unhappy with your decision has the right to appeal that decision up to the city council. So today, only if you approve the project or approve it with conditions does somebody have the right to appeal it up to council. If you vote return for redesign, the applicant does need to bring the project back for a second hearing in front of you. So I think that's kind of it in terms of broad overview. I just wanted to make sure we're clear that that authority and those responsibilities are outlined by the code as you're functioning as a design review body. I think as we get into the case and kind of if you have specific issues, rather, I'll be presenting the case and Chris, Ms. Reich, very accomplished in the design review process and can kind of answer some of the specifics as we move forward. And I can see Chair Mardian, I know is very familiar with our process as well.
Thank you.
So with that, I think I'm done with my preliminary comments on this, but.
Thank you, Mr. Lomis. So one question, so we can't continue? There's that, that option doesn't exist anymore?
The continuance really should only be done if there is significant outstanding information that is not allowing you to make an informed decision. If you just want to see a few more details on something, then you either should approve with conditions or, or vote return for redesign. A continuance would be if, for example, like, you know, some significant drawings was missing that would allow you to make your decision, I think. Is that right, Stephanie? You could probably elaborate on that.
Thank you, Mr. Lomis. You beat me to it. Yeah, this is a historical moment for us. We're gonna test our design guidelines with this. Thank you for the applicant for bringing it forward. With that, I'll go.
Before we go to Rather Dwong, who's gonna be presenting this today, I have some second preliminary comments just about the design guidelines, which I assume, despite all of our best efforts, none of us has memorized at this point. So I gave you copies of the relevant section for this kind of project, which are the infill development guidelines, which begin on page 141 of the full set of design guidelines. And as you can see, when you just kind of leaf through this, it's basically set up along the, the groupings that we have throughout the design guidelines and those correspond very much to the types of issues that we look at when properties are looked at by the design review board, where we look first at sort of the large-scale issues such as the setbacks, the placement on the lot, the orientation on the lot. We move on to look at the proposed structure itself in terms of its massing, its scale and proportion and its height. And then we start looking at some of the more finely tuned details, like the rhythm, the form of the roof, the materials that are used, material palette, the types of window and door openings, and, and how those kind of affect rhythms and proportions. And then finally, looking at siding and other specific materials. The kind of salient, all, all of those points are very salient and they're, they're fairly, you know, broadly drawn. We want to be able to look at projects that are proposed to us that aren't defined by these guidelines, but these are basically a framework for us to consider new design in the historic districts. If you turn to the first page, the opening paragraph has a sentence that addresses style. So you'll notice that in none of these headings in the guidelines do we talk about style. And that's, that's done on purpose. We don't want to mandate or dictate that any style is specifically to be used in any historic district necessarily. And in a district like Royal Boulevard, where we have a great variety of styles and a great variety of contributing status buildings and non-contributing status buildings, it leaves open many possibilities for owners and their architects to come forward with new ideas. The one thing that is noted here that's very specific is that the new project should not mimic an existing architectural style. And by that, we don't mean to not be influenced by an existing architectural style because I think not only in Glendale, but in historic districts across the country, using historic styles as a basis for a new design is completely appropriate. It's done all the time and the results can be excellent. I think what we're going for with that is that we don't want something that's a carbon copy recreation of a Spanish colonial revival or something where an, not necessarily trained observer might look at it and think, well, that house looks like it was built in 1925 rather than in 2011. We also call out in this introductory section, most importantly, this is a quote, "New construction should respect the rhythm of massing and setbacks within a historic district." So we're really looking at context, very much in the same way that the design review board bases its decisions on context. So even though we are in a historic district, it'll be interesting, as we go through this process more and more, we're gonna see that our thought process is very similar to what design review board does, but we're always kind of adding that extra level of kind of the historic context and the historic character of the neighborhood to kind of guide our decisions. So with that, that's the end of my preliminary number two. And then we have Rather Dwong to present the project.
Before you go there, Mr. Pla, we have communications from the public. Do we need to mention that at this point or have it read or we just, everybody reads?
I think we would do that after the staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Good afternoon, Chair Protam Mardian and commissioners. Been a while since I had the occasion to appear before the commission, but it's nice to be back. As Jay stated and Alan stated, the case before you is located 1459 East Mountain Street. This property is also known as 1401 Royal Boulevard in some files we have in the office. This is a first-time submitted for final review. As was mentioned earlier, the property is located in the Royal Boulevard Historic District. The property is located at the northeast corner of East Mountain Street and Royal Boulevard, where the area is located. This district consists of 30 homes and eight of the homes are non-contributors, including the subject property. I believe 14,000.
Square feet? Yeah, I don't, I don't know that.
Square foot in area. And it was developed in 1955 in the ranch style. This home was developed after the period of significance for this district. And as you can see on the site plan, the home is located, the existing home is located towards the rear of the property, which meant most or all of the living, outdoor living space is located towards the front or side of the property. There's, there's an existing pool as well as a wood deck located at the front along Royal Boulevard. Also on the property are numerous retaining walls located at the back as well as at the front. The property is accessed via Mountain Street and that will, will be maintained under the proposed condition. We'll be, we'll be going through some photos of existing property just to see what it looks like now and the site characteristic. Here, this is a view looking closest to Royal Boulevard, but looking towards Mountain Street. And there's a driveway coming from Mountain Street. Again, the top picture is looking towards Royal Boulevard and the bottom picture is the adjoining property to, immediately to the north of the subject property. And here's the garage. As you can see, the garage is slightly below grade. It's lower than the living space right now, so there are steps here leading to the front entry.
Just so everyone knows, the psychedelic colors we see in these photos are not on screen here or in the application, so I'm not sure how these are showing up on TV, but this is not part of the application.
Here's some more photos. And this is the front yard closest to the deck area. And also the photo shows the mature oak trees, which will be maintained. And that's the other condition that is unique to this property and resulted in the existing site planning, which is the, the mature oak tree as well as the shape of the lot. And these are photos of the rear yard. As you can see, it's pretty much limited because the lot slopes from the front towards the back and you have the retaining walls. So this is not really usable outdoor space for the owner, so primarily they would be using the front yard and side yard. The proposed project is a brand-new house designed in the French eclectic architectural style. The house is 3,325 square feet on two levels. But as you can see on the elevation drawings, primarily the home possessed a one-story appearance. The two-story appearance comes in for the garage only. So the three-car garage is located completely under the living space and all of the living space will be located on one single level. And the new garage is essentially in the same location as, as the existing garage.
Except it's rotated. Yeah.
It's skewed a little, yes, but in the big scheme of things, it's in close proximity of the existing garage. The property is zone R1R. This is a single-family hillside zone. We have three single-family zones in the city, two of which are single-family hillside, such as, as in the case of this subject property. And the other single-family zone is the R1 zone, which is single-family flatland. The requirements for these zones are different in terms of the development standards. One of the biggest difference is in the setback. If we can go back to the, to the site plan, I'll point out to the difference, one of the main difference between the R1 zone and the R1R. One, this is a corner property, which means that wherever the property fronts a street, that is called, that is considered the front setback of that property. So this property here, because it's not an internal, internal lot or interior lot, you have two frontages along Mountain Street as well as Royal Boulevard. So the minimum setback in the R1R zone is 15 feet. So therefore, the proposed project would have to maintain 15 feet continuously on both streets and at the corner. The project is surrounded by the R1R zone, so its neighbors are also designated the same zoning designation. The proposed building is 28 feet high. The maximum height permitted in this zone is 35 feet if the chosen style possessed a 3 to 12 pitch for its roof. So the proposed height is below the, the standard we would allow. So the proposed height is below the standard we would allow. Again, the setback meets the minimum for the zone. And the floor area ratio of the existing house is 1,945 square feet, which is .10 FAR, and the proposed square footage is 3,325 square feet, which is .27. So essentially, almost double the size from the existing residence. Again, as I stated earlier, the proposed architectural style is a contemporary interpretation of the French eclectic, French-inspired architecture. So in this neighborhood, you find a variety of revival-style homes and including Tudor, Spanish colonial revival, as well as American revival. So this is an interpret, a contemporary interpretation of the revival architecture. Also of note, four of the homes in this district have been designated as historic landmarks, I mean, listed on the Glendale Register of Historic Places. In terms of the finishes, the applicant is proposing to use stone veneer, aluminum-clad windows, decorative wrought iron, and concrete tile roof. These materials, staff believe, are consistent with the chosen style and is consistent with the neighborhood. You also find some, if not all, of these materials in the district and it's appropriate overall. The building has some movement since its wall, in its wall, so therefore it helps break up the mass as well as the fenestration of the elevations. And overall, staff support the project on the basis of its site planning, the massive scale, and the high-quality materials that will be used. And just to go over some more slides, we have a floor plan that shows the house radiating out as two wings towards both Mountain Street and Royal Boulevard. The existing house mainly is situated where the arrow is moving towards the back. It's a roof plan, designed in the hip roof style. And here's a photo of the property looking, standing along Mountain Street looking towards the property. As you can tell, this is another unique feature of the property, that it's not visible from the public right-of-way due to the tall hedges. I would assume maybe 15, 16 feet high. So the only opening you'll see is the driveway with the wrought iron gate. Otherwise, the house is fairly concealed. Here's another view from Royal Boulevard. These photos, yes, these photos shows the condition with the story poles.
That's the point, I guess, that they're hidden behind the hedges.
And lastly, the last slide shows a sideline study the applicant provided to staff. The top drawing shows sideline from Royal Boulevard and the bottom is from Mountain Street. As you can see, the majority of the house will be hidden from the existing hedge because the house is higher than the existing condition. If one is able to see anything, it would be the roof, particularly from the Mountain Street elevation. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
I have a, may I? I have a few additional comments to Rader's very complete report. Rader, if you could put back on the screen the image of the property, the images of the property from the street view. For Design Review Board, we typically will encourage the Design Review Board to take into account the view of the property and to prioritize the view of the property from the public right-of-way. And I believe that is also your mandate. I believe that the Historic Preservation Commission has that language in your ordinance while the DRB does not. We still urge that level of consistency to keep the priority on what's visible from the public right-of-way. In situations like this, the DRB also understands that landscaping, you know, is living material and can also die or be removed. One of the conditions that you may want to propose is that if something were to happen to the hedges, for example, or the planting, that they be replaced. And that can be a condition that continues with the approval of the property, which we enforce for a minimum of five years of the approval. I also want to call your attention to the last page of your report, which summarizes the staff report in all of the three different sections: site planning, mass and scale, and design and detailing. We've worked together to provide a level of consistency in the way that we've reviewed this project with the way that the DRB looks at projects. And so there's a level of consistency in the staff report writing. The last page has a summary, and obviously if the Historic Preservation Commission's opinions are different, that will change, but that verbiage is a proposal that would go into the record of decision. There are also conditions listed, and sometimes we will condition things, and I think in this case, there are a few conditions that are similar to what has been proposed. Items that we believe are of primary importance that if the project were to change or become value-engineered, these are items that we sometimes see value-engineered, the fenestration. The material for the fenestration is something that typically can, the applicant may want to modify as the construction process moves forward. And in this case, the windows have an arched, segmented arch on top of them. We have conditioned that that is part of the window rather than two separate windows, which would be a less expensive way of doing it. Sometimes we do try and predict what we may see down the road as the project develops and identify those for you, especially if it's, if they are items that we believe are important architecturally to the design of the building. So obviously, we're all here for, to answer any questions, but we've all worked together on this project as a team.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Jay.
If I can add something before we go to public comment, just it is, I don't know what it is, I don't know what the word is, but this site, as you can tell, is very unusual in any of our historic districts to have a site where the actual, the private spaces are pushed toward the street and are therefore screened by these hedges. And what Stephanie mentioned about if these plants go away, conditioning that those, that something come back is within the purview of the Commission, and I want to just make it clear that that's not typically how we do design review in terms of landscape. If someone has a bush in front of their window and they tell us, well, you can't see it from the street, we don't accept that as a strong argument because obviously that bush could go away and we want the window to actually be correct. In this case, it appears that this is the historic condition for this house. We don't have photos going back to when it was built, but it's pretty clear that always these areas were kind of private spaces that would have been screened from view by the, from the street. So we just want that to be part of your thought process as you're reviewing this instead of suggesting that it go away, which I think is beyond what we can recommend as a Commission, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pla. But going back with Mrs. Reick said, the five-year. Is it five years from now of the approval? So if something happens within five years, no control over it?
After five years, we would not have control over it. We can suppose that since this is the condition that's been in place for decades, that anyone owning the site who wants to swim in their pool is going to make sure that that pool's not, you know, right on the sidewalk and that there'll be some sort of screening there. But we can't, you're right, we can't guarantee that, and that's under our ordinances.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Reick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I neglected to make a side note that the same site was proposed back on August 14, 2008 to construct a new house as well, and that was approved by the Design Review Board with conditions. And that version is slightly, is different from what is being presented before you, and I have pinned the old drawings behind you on the bottom right-hand side, left-hand side.
Thank you very much. Any questions to staff or?
I have a quick question. There's fencing around the house, is there not, or yes? Since this is a new, new construction in accordance with the ordinances that exist today, wouldn't the fencing be going away?
If I may answer that, Commissioner Vidur, yes, there are fences as well as retaining wall along the front in conjunction with the hedges, but those fences and walls are permitted under an old variance that was approved back in 1981.
Can I follow up on that question, or maybe we should ask these questions later? Let's ask those questions later, the specific technical questions, but I want to open the public hearing unless we have a general comment at this point. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. I'll go with the applicant, Franco Noravian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Franco Noravian. 409 West Broadway, Glendale, California, 91204 is my address. I'm the architect on the project. Like Rader said, a little over two years ago, we had, we went to the Design Review Board, that was right before the creation of the historic area. And the project was approved, there was a few members in support. That project involved moving the garage and the driveway from mountainside to Royal and bringing the pool to where the current driveway area is. So we're swapping those two. And it was a, basically it was a two-story house off of Royal. The problem, it got to be too expensive, moving, moving the garage and moving the pool, so it was abandoned and so we had to redesign the project, trying to keep the existing garage and therefore the driveway, the gate, all that will stay, and the pool. One thing Rader didn't mention, maybe wasn't made clear in the plans, is that we're lowering the level of the existing garage by three feet. So currently, as you drive up, the driveway is kind of a little steep, a little too steep, and so it's going to be level, pretty much level with the mountain. And that's what enables us to keep the floor of the proposed house the same as the existing house. So we're not going up at the same level. In fact, I'm hoping that we can use most of the existing foundation on the floor. Other things I wanted to mention, yeah, as far as the fencing, it was even when we were proposing the two-story design in 08, I made sure before we did anything, because my client requested me to do that, that no matter what we did to the house, the fence could remain. So I met with the zoning administrator and made sure that that's doable before we go ahead and tear the house down. Because like Rader said, without the fence and the hedges, the lot is almost unusable. Because of the oak tree, you can't build anything in the front. And if you build something in the back and you have no fence and hedges, you have no yard. So it, that's very important for us to remain. It's a pretty simple house. As you see, all the living areas are on one level, only the garage is on a lower level. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Noravian. Any questions to?
I don't know if this is for questions or, you know, what?
Do you want a clarification?
Well, no, they're just some things that I found while I was reviewing it, that I had a lot of questions about things I didn't see in the package, and so I will bring those up, but that may not be a question, that may just be.
We'll leave those.
Let's leave it.
Let's leave those. Unless we have a specific question?
I can come back.
Absolutely. I'm sure you'll be back.
Before you close the public comment, I just wanted to draw the Commission's attention. You received two letters, one from the Glendale Historical Society.
But before you go there, I have three other speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Is it Mr. Shahab?
Cali. Mr. Cali, thank you.
Good afternoon, madam, gentlemen, the board. If I appear to come across nervous, that's because I am. Not that often do I have an opportunity to stand before a board especially of this caliber. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to give you, share with you, personal background. My wife and I resided in Orange County approximately 12 years ago when our children were infants. We decided that we were going to locate, relocate, and we were unaware of exactly a community that would be most conducive for the growth and development of our children. And in our search, we came across Glendale. Back then, I knew of Glendale with all the respect of a shish kebab. However, once I became exposed to the community, I began researching the communities, beautiful architect, the streets, and also an environment that we felt was, again, most conducive for the development of our children. So 12 years ago, my wife and I decided that we were going to move to Glendale, and we have been proud residents of Glendale since. Our children, our children have outgrown the existing resident, and that actually occurred maybe about four or five years ago when we initially began the commencement of our original plans. And as Mr. Franco had mentioned, economically, it was no longer feasible for us to pursue those plans. So we determined, we decided that we needed to revise the plans and also be able to give our children the opportunity to continue living in an environment that we felt was conducive, however, within a structure that we felt would be best for their interest when we came up with these plans. With the help of Franco, we, with his support, we created a floor plan that we felt was best for our family. And what you have in front of you is what we have. Excuse me, I am nervous. I have other comments that I would like to make, but I don't think I'm actually in a condition to do so.
Not scary people.
These are nice guys over here.
We are. Believe me, we're a test tube, don't worry about it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Cali.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
It was Sean, actually.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm Shab Kaylee, and I also reside at 1401 Royal Boulevard. And I, again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here today. And I guess it's exciting to be part of a historic day-to-day and be the first applicant in front of you, but I realize that that can be good and bad. So I like to stay positive and think that this is good and it's a good omen. And I just want to add to what my husband was saying earlier, you know, we've outgrown our house, our kids are growing, and we've toyed with the idea of moving to another area maybe versus rebuilding in Glendale. And we keep, after we go out and look at other properties, we keep coming back to Royal Boulevard. So we just really love this neighborhood and we, you know, our house is positioned, it's really the first house as you enter the area, so it has a big impact on the neighborhood. And I really love these plans. I think they're beautiful, they'll add to the... I think they're beautiful, they'll add to the beauty of the area, and I think they'll meet our family's needs. So thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. One more speaker, Lenny Reynolds. I know Lenny.
Hi, good afternoon. It's actually Leanne Reynolds.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. And I'm a nearby resident off of Royal Boulevard at 1510 Princess Drive, just another beautiful street up there. I am also on the board of the Royal Canyon Property Owners Association. But today, I'm expressing my opinions as a resident and not on the board. As you are aware, this home is the gateway for the Royal Canyon Historic District and residents of the connecting streets. And I'd like to first make a suggestion to the staff about the announcement of this Design Review Board meeting. It's been mentioned a couple times here that the address is 1401 Royal in addition to the other address on Mountain. However, there's not any signage on Royal about this particular project. The sign was mounted on the gate on a mountain, so it wasn't until Friday that most of us in the neighborhood really became aware that the project was happening. And that's why I gave up my afternoon today to come here, because nobody else could and short notice. But I think you would have had maybe a little bit more input from the residents in that whole area if we had kind of been aware driving up and down with some kind of signage. So maybe corner lots in the future need to have that, because it is a Royal Boulevard project, and we didn't have signage. So that said, I know the family, and I think that this is fantastic that they're staying in the neighborhood and building a new home. So I think the whole concept is really, really terrific. As you know, the residents of Royal Canyon have worked very hard to preserve the history on that particular street by forming a district and also even planting new trees so that we could have the consistency with trees in the future. So I'm here just to say that we do need to be extra careful to look at any new projects on this particular gateway that are going to have lasting effects for dozens of years in the future. The point that I wanted to speak to directly today, and I think others in the neighborhood had that, but again, maybe couldn't be here because they weren't aware, that the 15-foot setback on Royal Boulevard is a bit of a concern. I'm not exactly sure, you mentioned that it's conforming to the R1R zoning, but on Royal Boulevard being a historic district, the three adjacent homes going north have setbacks between 25 and 37 feet. So this is really not consistent with that kind of setback. As you know, that foliage hides the home right now. However, as was mentioned by staff, plant diseases can often kill the foliages, and mistaken gardeners can cut it down, and new owners might take down the foliage. So my concern is if there's a home that sticks out a bit more, if you will, when you're driving up and down that side of Royal, and the foliage is gone, then everybody has the potential to see that in the future. So I'm certainly not against the project, or it seems like it's going to be a very nice home, but certainly, driving down Royal Boulevard, if there was one home that was 15 feet versus the others that are 37, I'm a little concerned. So I'm not exactly sure, I'm not an architect, I can't visualize, but I just want to express concern and hope that you can really look at all those issues. If there wasn't foliage, would there be this structure sticking out in conjunction with the other homes on the block? So thank you very much.
I have one question. Your objection is only on Royal?
Yes, sir.
Not on Mountain?
No, because that's really not a historic district, and I'm just kind of here looking at it from a resident of the Royal Canyon, and our homeowner group, well, we have a few homes on Mountain, but the historic district itself is kind of my focus. So the 15 setback on Royal...
We have a district that is in process right now. Rossmoine District, which is, I think, a butt's dis.
Is the front facade going to be...
I haven't looked at the sightlines for the homes on Mountain.
One last question.
I'd have to double-check, I think so.
Were you notified?
No, I'm not in the area. In fact, all the board members of Royal Canyon, not one of us were notified because we don't live within the 500 feet. So between not having a sign and not having any notification, we're having a board meeting tonight, and I wanted to come and hear more about the project to discuss it, but that's why we don't have an opinion, because we haven't met as a board.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing for now. Yeah, we need to go over the two letters or a few letters that we had. Do we need to read that on the record, or everybody's read it already?
If the Commission's read the letters, I don't think we need to read them in total. I could synopsize them if you'd like.
Please do.
That's in the record.
Please.
Two letters, one from residents of the Royal Boulevard Historic District, Simon Wright and Greg Grammar, who are concerned about the 15-foot setback at the Royal Boulevard portion of the property, and concerned that that's out of keeping with other setbacks on the street. The more detailed letter comes from the Glendale Historical Society, from President John LaCascio, but it's coming from the society itself, basically with three concerns. They do find the scale and massing of the house to be appropriate for the district, but they're concerned first about the historicist style that was chosen, which we've discussed a little bit earlier. Their second concern is with the kind of entry portico. They think the doors and the porch are somewhat overscaled, and that ornamental detail should be used with restraint. And then finally, they're concerned about, again, about the 15-foot setback on Royal Boulevard. When they mention ornamental details, that issue is basically about the columns that are on kind of the open porch. And when you look at the drawings of the elevation, there's an open porch to the right with some segmental arches and columns, and they think the columns might not be appropriate for this. That's also the location that is at the 15-foot point in the setback, so the actual mass of the house isn't right at that point. It's more of that open porch, but it does have the roof over it, so it really reads as part of the overall form of the house.
Is that all, Mr.? Yeah. Thank you, sir. Before we open it up?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. And I apologize for the sign. There was, with the bushes as dense as they are, there was literally no place to put the sign. Typically, you have a front lawn, or you have some landscaping where you can put a sign, and in this case, it was almost impossible to put a sign on Royal. As far as the 15-foot, which everybody is concerned about, it was a challenge for me to design this, giving them all the required spaces that they needed, which previously was in a two-story, and I had to spread that over only one floor. So that's why we came a little close to the street. But you have to realize the 15-foot setback is only at one point. It's an octagon, and it comes to a 15-foot at that point, and it's an open porch. On the other side, yeah, the garage is also about almost 16 feet away from Mountain. But you have to realize, again, from Mountain Street, it's to the property line, not to the street itself. So it's actually about another 10, 15 feet to the actual street. And we are going down, I wanted to mention that again, so that the garage and the whole structure is lower than the existing, almost like a semi-subterranean structure. So the impact of it won't be as much as if it was a regular house, two-story house.
Can I clarify that, though?
Yes.
It looks like the story right above the garage still is at that same plane.
Correct, correct, yeah. But what I was trying to say is that you don't have a two-story structure 16 feet away, you have, you know, one and a half-story.
Since you're here, now you said, you mentioned a few times that you dropped the garage, but you still have an elevation difference of about two and a half feet from the driveway to your new finished garage level?
Yes, yes, we do have some slope.
You still have a...
But right now, it's like five and a half.
Yeah, it's a little high. I got that. Okay.
If I could just remind the Commission what our public noticing policies are for these kinds of hearings. We're required to notice all homeowners within a 500-foot radius of the property, which was done in this case, and I know that Ms. Reynolds is outside of that. We also do send a notice to all the homeowners groups, so we should probably check to make sure that we have the correct address for the Royal Canyon Homeowners Group. And then in terms of the sign, we do have a requirement to put a very large sign up in front of these sites. We only require one sign even at a corner lot, and in the case of this property, it seems the fence was probably the most logical place to put it, but I can see that there may have been some concern. But the applicants did meet all of the city's requirements.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for now, before we start? Any clarification from staff? Any technical issues or requirement issues?
Yeah.
I think you're on your own.
A couple.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Positive.
Excited to say that. You're on your own.
End of the boat, and away you go.
Don't go anywhere, okay?
I hope you have dinner for us today.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I have some comments, but, you know, thank you very much. It really does look like a lovely house, and quite a challenging one. I mean, it's ironic that, you know, you're building a new house, it's not going to be a contributor, but it's the most prominent space, I think, in one existing historic district, and then maybe another is pending historic district. I'm not sure. You may be in two historic districts. So eventually, anyway, so it's quite amazing. But as somebody who is, as you mentioned, reviewing, doing a first review, you're going to please bear with me, because I know I'm going to have a lot of really wacky questions, but I've got to ask them. You know, this is a learning process for everybody. The site plan for me was very, very hard to read. It just took me a long time to decipher where the footprint of the new house was. So, you know, I was really getting paranoid, like, oh, I can't do this, I'm not an architect, and then I just realized it's really confusing. There's a lot of info on here, so maybe a shading would have been better. So I had to get over that, and I eventually did. But the other thing that I was concerned about, so I was concerned about the clarity of the site plan. Secondly, on the rendering, where you show the various materials, I was under the impression that we got to see materials, and that we would be able to touch and feel materials, no, not pictures, that we would be able to touch and feel actual materials. Some of the questions that I came up with, well, the color scheme, you know, it says slate roof, slate-style roof, is the roof brown? Because slate is like slate-colored, right? So I had some concerns about what the roof was actually going to look like. The columns, of course, you know, we'll get to the columns, but just as, you know, a point of clarity, it's not very clear what type of columns you're proposing. So, you know, that's a whole other issue that we'll get into. The stone veneer, again, would like to see, you know, that's a very prominent detail of your, you know, I think that's one of the things that makes your building a contemporary riff on French eclectic, so that stone is very important, and what it's going to look like, and if it's going to look like veneer, or, you know, how it sets into the building. And the door, for instance, yeah, the comment that was, I think, made by somebody somewhere, maybe it was the Historical Society, you know, how big is that door? It looks disproportionately large, as does the portico for the house, and especially in comparison to the types of doorways you see on Royal Boulevard. It looks like a double door. Is it a door that, oh, yeah.
It's on the floor plan.
Yeah.
It's mentioned as well.
Yeah, it is. Okay, I missed it.
Eight by eight one.
Eight one?
Are there four?
So it's eight feet?
Pretty much eight foot square.
Is that a typo? It's three?
That's the roof size.
Okay, all right, all right.
Is the door size in here?
No.
Okay. So, you know, in general, what is it that the applicant is required in this type of application to show us, and what are the rules of the road for clarity of the plans? And also materials, and, you know, what's going to be used? So those were my questions, and, you know, I'm not seeing what I wanted to see. I really wanted to be able to touch and feel some of the materials.
Well, Commission Member Vidor, we absolutely appreciate that, and that's good information for us to have. What you see before you is not atypical of the kind of package that we do require for the Design Review Board. Rather than having full-size materials, which, in all honesty, we don't have a space, a physical space, to keep them, because they do become part of the record, and they are costly for the applicant to procure. Back in the day, when I was on the other side of the counter, all the companies would give them out for free like candy. They don't do that anymore. So we try to be sensitive to that, and if there are particular aspects of this project, we'll understand for next time the additional material that you would like to see, perhaps a more detailed or elaborate catalog cut sheet of the stone, the door cut sheet, that kind of thing. Because this is essentially conceptual design, and not all of the details can really be worked out at this stage, we try to be sensitive to not asking for more than would be typical for a conceptual or schematic design, although this is already more than what an architect would typically produce, and Chair Martyan could comment on that as well. But what we do have before us is consistent with what is typically provided for the DRB in the future. We'll ask for more enhanced information about the details, maybe larger catalog cut sheets until you become familiar with the process.
Since you mentioned that, you said conceptual review, but here we have a final review.
What I mean to say is that in the typical architectural design process, we're not asking that an architect produce working drawings for this review, because part of the point is that we get public comment, it's a public hearing, and some of the detail, maybe even the massing, would change as a result of the commentary. So we try to ask for as much information as necessary to describe the project fully without asking for more than what the architect would naturally do, say, at the end of the schematic design period, which in the architectural standard practice is typically about 30% of construction documents. So all the materials are chosen, the massing of the building is chosen, all the drawings that you see before you are done, but the structural drawings, mechanical drawings, all of that engineering hasn't been done, because there is an expectation that the city may require some changes.
I understand that, but I've been through the process several times over the years. We have a requirement chart that says you need to have this for final review. Starts from site planning, precise locations of all the trees and adjacent buildings, developments, fully dimensioned floor plan, colored elevations, hardline, rendering, roof plan, landscape plan, reduction, I mean, it goes on and on. Now you're telling me this is a little different submittal.
No, no, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I don't mean to suggest that that's not what's required, and I believe all of that is included in the packet in front of you.
But I don't see sections. I don't see a landscaping plan if this is a new house. Now, I'm not going to get too particular about the landscaping, but I need to see some sections on this. Although, you know, it's not really a complicated site, but it has some topography, and a section would have really helped determine this project further. But we'll stop there, and thank you very much for your... But going back to the material, I do get, I don't know, maybe they've changed the policy the last year or so. We have stucco chips there, like two by two, the roof tile pieces there, like one by one, two by one. I'm sure some of these suppliers still ask for that. I mean, they can do it. But we'll get there. I mean, obviously, this is the... I mean, obviously, this is the... But we'll...
And another thing, the Commission, in lieu of not having the materials today, when you're looking at things like veneer stone, I think it's completely appropriate to express concern about whether it's an ashler pattern, whether it's random or coarse, to consider corner conditions, which I think Commissioner Vidor was considering, where you don't want to have a vertical seam at the corners, you want to have stones appear to wrap the corner even though they are veneer stones. And all of the manufacturers are making those, so you could put that in as other condition or consideration or ask for that if the project is coming back to you, that that information be provided.
But before we get into too much in the material, I appreciate my colleagues, let's start concentrating on the site planning and the design of materials we can bring later and move on on that. But I'd like to go to Commissioner Morgan for... Since he lived in that area over the years and I wanted to get his sentimental values a little bit.
Well, I'm probably the only person here that actually played on the lot before there was even a house there. So... I don't recall, actually, growing up, that there was actually the hedges around it. In fact, if I'd known, I would have brought some photographs of the property that my father took in 1955. Excuse me. I obviously want a house that is appropriate for Royal Boulevard. I think it's the gate guardian. It's the lot. I like the house itself. I am a little distressed with the board... With the hedge completely around it. I mean, you could design anything and put it behind and no one would ever know what was there unless the hedge was gotten rid of. So that's my biggest concern. I obviously want a house that... I mean, I grew up on Royal Boulevard, so you hit a chord when you said, you know, you wanted to raise your kids there. It's a great place to raise your kids. I would just... I just want to make sure that it's completely appropriate for Royal Boulevard itself. So I'm just listening because unfortunately, I'm more of a historian than a... Than an architectural person, so I defer to the power at this moment on it, so...
Well, thank you very much. Go ahead, Commissioner. Thank you for your...
I have a few comments and questions.
The mic I was pointing at.
I have a few comments and questions and a few concerns. One is the setback. As I look at the range of properties, it's from 20 feet to 39 feet and in both directions. It's less than even the minimum, which seems concerning, especially flanking the entrance of Royal Boulevard, you know, Historic District. And as I look at the house in my mind, that's on, you know, the right across the street, and this is really, you know, kind of the two flanking signature homes entering the Historic District. I have concerns, one about the setback, but also about the structure, you know, not being perpendicular, but really kind of radiating out towards property lines. And if you look at any of those homes along Royal Boulevard, they... Well, and in the entire, you know, kind of Glendale Historic Districts, they typically are not angular, you know, with wings coming out towards property lines. They're pretty much perpendicular, you know, to property lines. Even if there's jutting out rooms, they are still done in keeping with the property lines. So that's a concern of mine. The other one that I'm not sure even is relevant, I wanted to discuss it, was I saw no fireplace or chimney. And in the era of this Historic District and of all the properties on Royal, I believe there are chimney elements and fireplaces. And so again, I don't know if that's something we should concern, but I think that would draw attention to this not necessarily fitting in with the rhythm of the historic neighborhood. The... Another feature that I know in the styles of Royal Boulevard, you don't have the same light fixture numerous times as a repetitive element. You would have very interesting ornate light fixtures, very different, even on the same facade. And so it looks to me in the picture here, there are six to eight of, and maybe they haven't been specified yet, of kind of the same light fixture over and over. And that, to me, doesn't fit with the historic nature of that district. Columns, I have a question and concern with it, too. The material doesn't seem to be fitting with the other homes on that street. So those are topics up for discussion, I think. If you have comments.
If I just want to mention to my colleagues, maybe we should concentrate on the site planning and the design rather than maybe nitpicking on the details right now.
Okay.
Because I think we need to give... However, we're going to go, I'm not sure, but I want to hear the concerns on the site planning, the setback, the height, the entry, and we'll get into the details of it a little later. But I do agree with some of the comments that my colleagues make. I do have some concern with the site planning. I do feel... I mean, I was both concerned, actually, on both setbacks, on both streets, but now I'm done looking at the topography and, you know, we're trying to keep this as a one-story house, which I appreciate, or a two-story on that end of the garage. You know, I can live with the 16-foot setback because of the grade change from Mountain, but on Royal, I have a concern. I think if you look at your site plan, look how far this adjacent building is. I mean, it's pretty much aligned with your existing house and you're projecting this whole thing in there. I think maybe you should have at least 20-foot setback, give it a relief. The reason I'm mentioning it because you're kind of treating these elevations as flat ground, especially on Royal. You have this slope that is coming this way and it's vanishing, so your mass isn't here. I don't know if you visually... And that's where, you know, that's where my trouble is, is, you know, you're sticking this porch out, although it's open, transparent, but you still have a roof on it. I think that needs to be pulled back. And the other concern I have, which is more of a technical part, I hope, Mr. Franco, you'll follow up on it because you may have some issues with the building slope setback at the back. I truly think you're pushing the envelope to the back, to the retaining wall so close. I think, you know... And you're creating some roof shapes that you don't need to create, you know. Those roof shapes could be more straightforward. And I do have concern... I'm not going to dictate style, size. You know, I think people are free to do that. They choose whatever style they want, but as long as we can make it fit and work, you're entitled to it. I have no objection. As far as the site planning, the way it's shaped as a wing, I don't have a problem with that. I think just the fact that the porch sticks out so close to the street is the main issue. And one thing, if we're going to call this out as a French eclectic, I think the roof should be a little steeper. I think you're getting there. I think you're in the right direction. But the roof should be steeper and I do think you need to add some sort of a chimney element will help enhance it. And I'd like to see sections for you to really explain to me how... What's going on in this front where the oak tree is and how it relates to the street. I don't know where it's going yet, how the decision is going to be, but if we... If you come back, I'd like to see the street curbside, you know, the sidewalk drawn in here. I can truly understand the mass because it's not really... It's flat in here, but then it drops in here, then it goes up from here and the same thing from there. I'd like to see some relation with the street. I'll have you come up, let me finish. And I do feel you're pushing the envelope a little more than it should be. And my concern, actually, I don't know if it's the colors, and I'm not going to tell you what colors to do because I like to be free about it. I think you're blending some Tuscany in here, if I'm not mistaken.
We don't think, and Mr. Noravian can correct that, that these colors, I don't believe, are the colors they're proposing exactly, so...
These?
Yes, it's more...
And I do feel the entry is a little massive, but, you know, a home like this should have a double door. I mean, most of the homes in that neighborhood have double doors, if I recall. They don't...
There's double doors.
None of them also? I thought I saw a few double doors. I just, you know, I think the mass could be reduced a little more. I think we're pushing the envelope. And at one time or another, I was really concerned on Mountain side. I said, okay, let's leave the garage at that location and set the building back on the second floor. Give it a little relief. Then I'm willing to live with that as long as we push this back from the Royal portion. Now, I don't know what would affect. And the last one, my comment is, what's happening with the eaves? Franco, can you come up for a minute? Thank you. The eve detail, is that a stone treatment that you have?
A crown molding. Could possibly be precast or we can just leave it as a stock hold detail.
Do you have any overhang at all?
Yes, like a six-inch overhang, yeah. I mean, the overhang will be the molding.
The mold, so you have some sort of a treatment there?
Yes. And then the gutter.
And that matches with the columns, basically?
Yeah, the precast, yeah, it would match with the columns, yeah. As far as the color, it's what's on the sample board is our...
You haven't noticed that, but it's still...
Oh, it's still too yellow for you.
I don't know. I'm not going to pick on color. Believe me, I'm not that kind of a... You know, it's a free country, you know, you can't... I still think, you know, there's some... It's not true French. It has some Tuscany influences in there. And if we can kind of delineate it, that it will be more cohesive. And I agree with you. You need to have some covered area on the... Next to the pool. I mean, I appreciate that, you know, you're trying to do that, but I think you need to pull it back.
If I may, let me first answer your section. If you look on the... What are we calling it?
Sightline?
Sightline studies. It does show the section because...
We don't have those. We just... We're just asking for copies of it. We'll distribute that in a moment.
Oh, okay, so that's the...
We didn't get those.
You're right. So that shows the section and throughout the entire site. And as far as the... I have a... I think I have a solution for taking it away from... I was kind of sketching. The... A solution might be to detached... In fact, we thought about it originally and then we decided it's better to continue the same roof. If I detach the octagonal patio and move it... Easier if I just show you.
Sure, go ahead.
I can create both a setback 20 to 25 feet and also lower it because when I detach it, you were mentioning that Royal Boulevard drops and our pad is flat.
There's about seven, eight feet difference from there, yeah.
Correct. So what I... By detaching it, I can create a staircase going down to it. So it'll be lowered and moved back. And I think that would address everybody's concerns about being so close to Royal.
I don't know. I don't know how it's going to... It's going to block your view, though.
It would be a detached, yeah, yeah.
It's going to... And you're getting closer to the oak tree.
Yes, that's another... That's another challenge.
I mean, I was thinking more in the line... I mean, I know, you know, you have this floor here. Do you really need that much? This open area, you have your living room.
That will be another possible...
I mean, I was trying to be a little helpful. Push it back, create about, you know, 20 feet or so of setback.
That's...
Then, you know, you'll push it back, then you're away from it with landscaping and the fences that you have will cover.
Correct.
I mean...
That's another...
But that's my comments. And I do feel that... Check with the building department. I'm just giving you heads up a little bit. I'm sure you know it, the building slope setback in the back.
Oh.
Because you need to have at least minimum five feet clear there, you know, from the wall itself.
Right, right.
You know, you're too close there. The reason I'm... You might run into a problem with the foundation and the footing of the retaining wall. You know, I don't know if you're telling me, these are all legal permitted walls? Are we...
Yes.
They're all legal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I assume we're at the point where we're saying, you know, we're giving our concerns in that there's... Like, how many rounds of this do we do? Is it when we're all done, are we going to summarize and move on?
Yeah, we have to summarize eventually, yeah.
Good.
I'm writing down everything I hear right now.
Okay, great. Because this is painful. Okay. So my comments were pretty much in line with my colleagues. I agree that the setback, because the setback of the Royal Boulevard houses is part of the defining feature of the district, it's included in the Historic District application, I think we have to comply with the existing setback. So we have to be in that range, even though 15 feet is allowable. So I agree, we need to bring it back.
Do you have a number in mind?
Well, I was going to go with the minimum that was in the district already so that there wouldn't be setback creep, but, you know, I'm flexible on that. You're saying that you have a solution for that, so it just should be at least the minimum setback that we currently exist.
So that would be 20 feet, according to our records.
Do we have a setback at the house adjacent?
Yeah, it's right here. It's shown in the silhouette, it's shown right in here.
Is this setback to mention?
No, but I'm just taking eyeballing the pictures.
Some of these...
We have to come up with a recommendation for what we want the setback to be.
Yeah, because if you're going to say 35 or whatever it is with the next door, then you're really chopping this whole thing up.
Yeah.
I think we have to be mindful of the fact that we're setting, you know, if we invoke a certain principle of how a setback should be handled, we're kind of setting a precedent for, you know, how we're going to look at and fill in all Historic Districts. So we should be mindful of it and, you know, say, okay, it should be the minimum or it should be like the one adjacent, but whatever we decide, that we should try to be consistent in our approach. So maybe we just need to spend a little...
Yeah, we need to spend a little more.
Minutes on this.
Few minutes on that, plus keep in mind when you're doing that, it's only a piece of that project set. The rest of the house, it's in the existing footprint. It's only the portion of the living room and the porch that is sticking out.
So those are the ones that are out of the...
Out of that envelope, yeah.
Okay. And that makes it easier, I think. Then the question is, what is the solution to that? We know we don't like what it is, but...
I'm not sure. You know, the different... Well, this is a survey, so I'm assuming they surveyed the property, right?
Adjacent?
It's not necessarily accurate because we're not allowed to go on public... Or private property to do the survey. One example, I guess we should go to that slide, is 1415 Royal, which I think is one of the houses everyone's very familiar with on the street, the next-door house. The chart says that's a 37-foot setback. We're looking at that and we think it's significantly less than that, and that house does have a presence toward the street. The setback line is measured from the inboard line of the sidewalk also. We should all keep that in mind where this actually starts. But just, these were a few examples we put up of what the setbacks look like in some of the neighborhood rather than what the numbers are, which is kind of abstract. Unfortunately, they're green.
Okay, so can I go on?
Go on.
Get this done.
Go on.
All right, yeah, prominent corner. Oh, all right, I have to say this and I'm sure everybody's going to tell me to shut up, but I think that hedges...
I'll try to later on.
Right, okay. I think hedges, although I understand the point about dealing with the public right-of-way, I feel like I have to discount hedges of this magnitude because, you know, they just obliterate everything. And if that were the case, why even bother having a review? I mean, the hedges are there and there's no public right-of-way to look from, except for a few little peekaboo's. So to me, that's not the issue. I have to look at this as if it's the most prominent corner of a Historic District and those hedges aren't there, and what if they weren't there, and what's this going to look like? And at some point, you may want another solution for your privacy issue anyway. I... So that's for the record. I think the hedges have to be... Should be eliminated from the consideration. Also fencing. I know that there's this kind of industrial-style fence that you have around the house with the electric gates, and I'm a little concerned about the balcony. There's one wrought iron railing prominent on the house. And just to make sure that we understand, I realize we don't want to nitpick style, but to some extent stylings is what is important in reviewing a house in a Historic District. So we have to talk about them. And that balcony could either be, you know, one of these... You see these industrial-looking, straight, thick, you know, very thick supports and they're not good. So having some understanding of what you're going to do with that railing, I think, is important, that wrought iron railing. Yeah, there's the one that's in black, and what the style of that is going to be, that it's going to be thin and subtle and, you know, whatever. So that's an issue. Massing, okay, I don't have any problem. The rhythm of the house is awkward, but I understand what you're working with. So I would accept the general plan with the setback consideration revisited. Yeah, we already talked about materials, don't feel like I have enough. Smooth stucco, slate roof, fine. The precast concrete sills, I'm not sure I understand what that will look like, but it seems like the window sills, will they be wood, or is there a sill under a sill? I just...
The sill will be precast concrete, which will have a molded profile that we could get some more information for the commission about. And then the new windows will, the new aluminum-clad wood windows will sit directly on that.
Okay.
And they'll be sloped to shed water.
Okay. I think the roof is okay. I kind of prefer you to, yes, you're inspired by the French eclectic style, but the more contemporary you can make the house, and the more that you just riff on the style rather than try to mimic it, makes me happier. So the fact that the roof wouldn't be in compliance with the true French eclectic seems okay to me. But the Roman, Greco-Roman style, at least that's what it looks like. I'm not sure what kind of columns you had in mind, but that seems really off for this house. And, you know, dangerously drifting toward the pastiche concept, which wouldn't be good. So those would have to go. Let's see, wood garage looks good, wood shutters looked good. The stairs, what is the stair material? Could you just reiterate? The risers, you know, what we're going to see on the stairs when we look at the front of the house? Are those...
They're rendered to look like they're with the stone cladding material.
Okay.
Could...
Full-colored stone?
Possibly.
Okay. Let's see, was there anything else? I think that was it for me.
Okay. Ms. Morgan, anything else you want to add?
Oh, the door. I think the door should be standard height, and I would really beg you to think about reducing that portico. Some, the man who was talking, he mentioned, you know, some of the houses have, you know, they're a certain way. And I think there've been some really disproportionately large porticos put on some houses, which is what's actually made them more difficult to accept. So if you would reduce that, and also the door to maybe this, I don't know what the standard height of a door is for an entrance. What is it, seven feet or something like that? It may be, and if it is, that's great. So like seven feet.
Do you want to see a single door or a double door?
I'd like to see a single door. A nice size, beautiful, beautiful wood single door of regular size.
That entry will vanish.
Be the possibility of adding side lights or...
Could be side lights, yeah. Okay, could we share?
You said my piece.
No? Okay, so, well, are we, are we going to have a motion then, or any...
Well, you have three choices in terms of how you want to proceed with the applicant. If you're comfortable with making conditions, the staff will approve. You can approve with conditions. If you would like this to come back, so that you can review materials and other drawings in more detail, you can ask for a return for redesign.
Those are your options, obviously, as Jay mentioned. If, if, if we could, Rather and myself will read back the comments, so that we can get a clear understanding of what we're talking about. And just to let you know, there's nothing that we've heard here today so far that we would be uncomfortable working with this applicant. We've worked with this applicant a lot in the past, both Rather and I have, Jay as well. And I think we could get to a level of specificity, if the commission is comfortable with that, that we could take the intention of your comments and work with the applicant if you so desire. So Rather will start with the conditions, and I'll join in if he's missed anything.
Before you go there, I just want to clarify about the walls again. Since this is a new house, don't you lose your non-conforming issues when you have retaining walls and things like that?
Chair Protem Martin, that is a valid question. But in that situation, you're referring to a property owner or property would lose its non-conforming rights if there was not an entitlement to it, meaning in this case, there was a variance. If, if the wall was constructed under an old rule where it allowed it many years ago, and the rules have changed for today's standard, that would become legal non-conforming. But because it did not have a variance, for example, then it would have to go away if it was a new house.
So the variance is keeping this...
Correct.
Including the gate, right at the front property?
Yes, that's the distinction between this property and other legal non-conforming properties throughout the city.
Well, let's go ahead and read to the comments. Is the board, let me ask the commission, comfortable with staff handling it before they read all that?
Should we read it first and then make this...
Let's hear it first.
Let's hear it, make sure, first we have to make sure that all the commissioners agree to, to the various provisions we'll be talking about.
The staff heard a number of comments, some of which are common among the commissioners. We heard the concerns over the hedges and its height, and the possibility of eliminating or removing the hedge. Forwardly, there was a concern over the setback on both streets, particularly along Royal Boulevard. We also heard the concerns about the wings that are radiating out of the main building form, and that the structure should be more perpendicular to the lot. There was a comment about the fireplace or chimney element missing from the proposal that is found in the district. Repetitive light fixture and, or its design on the exterior elevation. And there was a suggestion of a 20-foot setback along Royal Boulevard. And staff wanted to get a clarification whether that would be applied to the setback along Mountain Street as well. About, there was concern about the roof shape. And a comment about the roof needing to be steeper, if appropriate. And there was comment about the style and the appearance of the railing, that it appears to look industrial in how it's being portrayed on the elevation. So there's more information that is necessary in terms of its dimensions.
You know, it's hard, it's just hard to tell.
And the door should be of standard height and possibly reduced to a single door opening, supposed to the double door. And there was a suggestion or agreement to the possibility of adding side lights on either side of the doors.
That's just me, not them.
That was from staff, but the board appeared to... And Ms. Reich?
There was a consideration to modify the color, make it somewhat less yellow. And we heard that coming from the commission as a consideration rather than a condition. There was also concern that the columns on the porch were not appropriately designed, that they should be more in keeping with this, this style, and likely be of a more simple and straightforward design if they were to remain. Because we did hear a, what would likely become a condition of significant modification to that porch element. And we would assume that if the portico element would reduce in height and the door would be required to become a single door, the portico element would then also be required to have a reduction in width. But that's an assumption on our part, not something that we specifically heard.
That's what I meant.
Yes. And we would condition, if the commission chooses, we could read off a list of conditions requiring additional information about the stone veneer that's proposed, cut sheets for the railings. And if the board would, if the commission would like, once we receive those clarifications, we could read off some very specific language until you are comfortable with those conditions.
Yeah, if I could include the roof tiles also, to just verify what those will look like.
It's quite a bit of conditions, though. How many conditions we got?
14.
Staff comfortable to approve this all?
That's not uncommon, and to be honest, it's, the number of conditions on a project typically does not intimidate staff. What we, we're not very easily intimidated. But in any case, what does get us uncomfortable is if the commission would ask for very substantial changes in the massing of the project. In that case, unless, and we haven't heard that here. If there were requests for substantial massing changes, then we would have a concern that, well, that's really hard to define in a condition. It's also not likely that the commission would necessarily understand what they were getting. It may not pass what we affectionately refer to as the drive-by test, that when the commissioners ultimately are driving by the site, it should look like what they approved or what they thought they approved. That's, that's something that we, we absolutely do implement the conditions as we agree to write them. So we'll read them back, and we're, we're very rigorous. Once those conditions become part of the record of decision, that no matter how vociferous the applicant becomes later on, that they don't like this or that condition, we don't easily or ever let them off the hook on those, so just FYI.
I also wanted to throw out that there, in terms of these conditions that you're discussing, there was some conflict on the commission. I just wanted to pull out the couple that I heard and let you kind of express your views. I believe some people, one commissioner thought that the radial kind of plan was a problem. Another commissioner thought that that wasn't a problem. The, one commissioner brought up the chimney, which I didn't hear any disagreement about. I think for staff to move forward with that, we'd probably need a little more feedback about, you know, where you see that going. There is precedent for chimneys, obviously, on French revival-style houses. When we looked at it, we didn't see that it was necessarily a problem. But if we had some idea where, where that might be placed, or what type of chimney, if it would be coming through the roof or something that was visible on one of the facades, that would be helpful. And then in terms of the roof shape, we heard that the, one commissioner thought the roof should be steeper. Another commissioner thought, because this is a more contemporary interpretation, that we had a little more leeway and that the proposed slope was okay.
In addition to what Mr. Platt just mentioned, we heard substantial agreement that the setback from Royal Boulevard should be larger than it is. And as Mr. Dwang mentioned, 20 foot was discussed. But there did not seem to be substantial agreement in your discussion that the setback from Mountain must be modified. So clarification on that would also be useful.
Any issues on the setback on Mountain to my colleagues? You want to see that changed?
I think if we determine a setback, let's just say we shouldn't go beyond 20 or 25 or whatever it is, then it should be consistent, if truly the guidelines are typically consistent. The one a whole 20 should be in the whole. Because I know right now we're concerned because it's in a Royal District, but if it's going to... But the Rossmoyn District, then we've got to be concerned with the property on the other side as well.
Now, going back to your comment, I'll tell you, setback in our staff report, page three, it says the front setback should match the established range of adjoining buildings. The building should be placed alignment with other properties of uniform setback. Exists within the average setback area varied. Now, this is from our guidelines, right?
That's from the guidelines. The guidelines didn't anticipate kind of a strange site configuration and oak tree situation like this, so...
We didn't anticipate the hedges, we didn't. But we're getting tested today. But I need some direction from my colleagues, which way they want to see this, whether these are a number of conditions, or we can eliminate some, or do you want to see it back? We need to narrow it down.
If you want to poll your colleagues for each of these, we'll keep track and let you know.
Let's do it. Let's start with the setback.
The setback's critical to my approval of it.
Consistent setback.
So what is their specific number?
My question was, what are the setbacks on either side? If one is 37 feet, you know, if you go to 20, you're still sticking out.
Yeah, but that's only a portion of the building. It's not really the whole thing. It's just that porch, covered porch area, that's where we are concerned is. Because the rest of the building right now is in keeping with the footprint of the existing building. I mean, we should at least give...
And is it compatible with the house adjacent to it?
Yeah, but not the porch. So the porch will be sticking out. Now, how much do you want this porch to stick out? Is it a 20, or what's the number that the board feels comfortable with?
Well, I feel that considering that's not actually the mass of the house, and it's, you know, with this array here of wings, it's sticking out into the corner, that the minimum could apply to this. That would be my opinion, and the minimum is 20 something.
Well, the minimum quote required is 15.
The minimum in the chart is 20.
I'm using the, the district range, not, not the...
20, okay, so 20, well, I guess then, well, is that 20 sufficient? Yes.
It's a special case.
Only for this one?
This house.
On both sides? On both, it should be both sides?
If we're going to set a precedence, at least somewhat, let's have it within the range.
Right. At least it's in the range. I mean, this, this, this house, I realize for setback isn't going to be a precedent because it's such a weird configuration that it's like its own case.
How does the setback on Mountain, though? What, what does it affect on the property itself?
Garage. Well, the garage has to be reduced somehow. The garage, yeah.
Four feet.
This is what the garage, you know, you have to reduce it. But that's only at the corner, I think, only at the corner is 16. Then it goes, varies back at 20. So you're pushing that corner four feet back?
Does that affect the house?
Well, the house has to be, has to shrink.
At the Royal, at the Royal facade, it seems clear, because we have this open kind of patio, there seems to be a fair amount of flexibility, right, at that point, in terms of design solutions. Given that the applicants are asking for a three-car garage and the site has, you know, the strange shape, I'm not sure how easily they could cut back the size, the footprint of the garage and still get their goal soon.
They have a few, few extra feet in the garage, I think.
Yeah, they do.
They have a few. They have a little bit extra in here. They have a little bit extra.
In addition, the applicant may want to, because it's, because of the geometry of the house and the geometry of the site, it's only that corner that's at 16 feet. I just wanted to mention that I, I'm not clairvoyant, but the applicant may in fact want to adjust the geometry. And if that's okay with the commission, we'll include that as a potential possibility in the condition, just so that we know that you're, you're not being emphatic about it being four feet reduced in that same... being emphatic about it being four feet reduced in that same geometry, but they do have the option to shift the geometry. I'm seeing nods on that.
If they can make it work, that's fine with me. If they, if the commission's desire to make it 20, then however he arranges it, then he can make it work.
Great. Thanks for that clarification.
Now, by doing all this, by just playing with these two setbacks, would staff be able to make this work if we decide to go in that direction?
We feel absolutely comfortable. We can work with this applicant to, while they revise the setbacks.
Okay, let's go down to the next one.
Chimney.
Well, we have, the main one is setback, so 20 on both Mountain and Royal. Can you go down the list, Mr. Platt? We had the setback resolved to 20 on both sides.
We have the setback, we, I, I think everyone's more or less on the same page with the hedge, where we're looking at the houses if the hedge doesn't exist, but we're not asking for any changes to the existing condition at this point.
Yeah. Fireplace?
There was, the radiating wings was brought up, where there was some.
That was Commissioner Desner's. Is everybody in agreement? Are you uncomfortable with the wings that have been created with the site plan?
No.
No, I mean, it would be nice if it was more like the houses, but.
It's not.
I don't have a solution to that. It's a very strange.
With a lot.
They're in two historic districts, well, one pending, one existing. You know, have all these frontages.
Yeah, but the only way to eliminate that, I mean, if we, if we want this house to be one-story in linear fashion, which can take the French eclectic, then if we say no to that, then the only way to accommodate it is go to a story.
I'm fine with the massing of the.
So we have near-unanimous approval on, on the floor plan and the shape of the house?
Shape of the house, yeah.
The chimney, we've asked for a little more information from the commission.
However relocated, it's in the living room, it's in the middle, and somewhere in this vicinity. That's my opinion, of course.
So we'll have a, we'll have a chimney that projects from the roof, not from, in front of one of the facades. Can we ask why they didn't include the chimney?
Yeah. By the way, did you, was that a, Mr. Franco, we need you up here. Was the chimney for a reason that you didn't?
The reason it was eliminated, there is a fireplace. But these days, the code doesn't allow a wood-burning fireplace anymore.
That's right, yeah.
So you have to do, if we do a chimney, it's purely just decoration. And we don't have, because of the floor plan, we don't have the opportunity to put the chimney on an exterior, which is typically what you would see. If I put a chimney, it would just be something sticking out of a roof, and it didn't seem like it would help anything. That's why it was eliminated. We have fireplaces in two of the rooms, but there would be direct vents, so they only have a, like six inches.
Gas burning?
Gas burning fireplace would have like a.
I mean, you can place it somewhere, if you want to just.
Absolutely. If you want a chimney, I can give you a chimney.
This, this will be a false chimney that we're?
I mean, if he wants to put, if he has a chimney, it's a false chimney, then he can put the fireplace if he wants to.
Right.
But a home should, like, this should have a fireplace.
We, we, we won't be allowed to do a fireplace. They don't allow wood-burning fireplace.
Gas, gas burning? Gas burning, AQMD only allows.
Gas burning, meaning you can't put wood in it.
You can't put wood in it.
Yeah, so, so that's.
So you'll be adding a gas-burning fireplace to the living room?
We have a gas-burning fireplace, right between the living room and the family room. It's a two-sided fireplace.
Just a chimney.
But we just don't have a chimney because you don't need a chimney.
Oh, yeah, well, you can still have direct, the, the vent going up.
Kind of like a walk-in.
Commissioner Vidor has a question to Mr. Platt. Thank you, Mr. Platt.
This has to do with, you know, what, the decisions we make here. What, when you look, I, I agree, I mean, I thought that was a good idea, that if there's a lot of chimneys in the district, that it makes sense to have a chimney because it kind of replicates the massing in some way. Is that more like, do you look at adding an ornamental chimney as more like mimicry, which we want to avoid, or more like trying to replicate the massing of the house?
If it were ornamental, I would probably recommend against it, but we just learned that there actually is a fireplace proposed in an area where we could have a chimney come up to the roof. What we do is create more of a decorative surround around the chimney, which only requires a smaller vent. The question would be, I, I believe on a French revival, often you would see a stucco-clad chimney, so that would be the staff recommendation if you approve that.
Does McCall's house have a chimney?
It's in.
McCall's house.
So is the fireplace?
Not on the street.
Okay.
We have, we have three French revivals in the neighborhood.
They both have them, no?
I vote for the chimney.
Elaine Wilkerson's house.
So the chimney would be located where the applicant indicated he's, has designed a fireplace between the living room and the family room. Is that, is that correct? Okay, I'm seeing nods.
I'm reading this correctly. The chimney would come up from the roof somewhere right in this area.
Correct.
Moving on.
Okay, moving on. We have three so far.
Concern about repetitive nature of the proposed light fixtures.
I'm open on that. I don't particularly, however.
What we might typically see are kind of more special fixtures at the doorway and less ornate fixtures. We could look at some precedent on French revivals in the area and, and come up with ideas that we could work with the applicant on.
Okay.
Next, the roof shape, I, I think we're okay with the proposed roof.
I suggested a little steeper, gives you a little more French, but if the, my colleagues feel it shouldn't mimic what's out there, then we can leave it the way it is.
I think anyway.
I, I really like it, being a contemporary house that kind of pays homage to the French style, so that it's really a contemporary house, so.
Yes, I agree.
We eliminate that. Then we're eliminating the steep, leave the roof long?
I believe so?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the plan. So the roof slope stays as proposed. The balcony railing was also mentioned along with the fence, the driveway gate, but I think we're only talking about the balcony railing. The proposal calls for two kind of decorative panels that look like they would be wrought iron panels with some, what I would call, French detail. But then there's the vertical balusters or railings that may be the problem.
What about on the stairs? Aren't they going to have railings? Don't they have to have railings?
Yeah, they have to have railings.
Yeah, I think, if I may, they're drawn a little bit heavier than they would be perceived partially because of the angle that, that the elevation is drawn at. What we could stipulate in the condition that the rail, that the applicant would provide a cut sheet prior to building permit, and that the railing be appropriately visually lightweight and ornamental as appropriate to the style.
And if I'm taking direction from the commission, it's a little less industrial, still decorative, but not over the top.
Right, yes. That's good. What about the stairs, though? Railings for?
You bring something interesting.
Railings for the stairs.
Maybe the architect could address that, because I don't see them on the drawing.
Because this stair, I mean, besides the railing, this stairs and this stairs is different.
May I approach?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead. Is that the orientation or?
Yeah, no, this is the stairs.
Because that's different.
The size is longer.
And here you have much more number of stairs.
Or you said the first.
Oh, I, I know what the problem is. In this, in this plan, it, it goes to a landing and then it has some more stairs, so that the landing is drawn there, so there's like four more stairs after you get there. But we would need a railing, and we would match the same railing as this. It just gets too cluttered when, when I draw the railing toward and I left it out.
All right. Hello? You know, the railing is not going to make the building or break it, and, you know, so.
Additional comment that we heard on the stair that we can include in that particular condition is that the stair tread and risers should be the same stone veneer at the base of the house.
And we'll also include a note that will review the cut sheets of the stone cladding material to make sure that it truly replicates real, real stone rather than veneer stone at the corners.
Okay. Next, double door, was it?
Next. The front door, I believe there is unanimous agreement that it become a single door, and in doing, or not, not unanimous, near unanimous.
I'm open to, I mean, a house this big, you know, double door is fine, but maybe you could reduce the mass of the entry.
Would the other commissioners agree? If we reduce the portico size, double door is less an issue or still an issue?
Make sure the height is regulation height.
I think single door is important. There are larger homes in that district with single door, I mean, large, but it's still single. Reduce the portico and have a single wide door.
I like that argument.
Okay, so we'll go with a single door.
And side lights? No side lights?
No.
It's possible, there's precedent in French revival to have side lights in, in the district even.
But in the district?
I believe, and, you know.
The only one I'd like to picture, for example.
Mr. Morgan? I would think so, yeah. I think the McCall's house has side lights, and.
McCall's house does have side lights, yeah.
Rather, could you flash to that last?
And I would suggest that if the portico were lowered, that its eve line should match the rest of the house.
Yes.
Because if it's, because if it's not, right now, it's different enough that it doesn't look like a mistake. If it were lower and didn't match the eve line of the rest of the house, you would run the risk of it looking like it, it was not quite aligning, it wasn't quite designed that way.
Portico becomes, whatever, the entrance of the house is like all one eyebrow here and then.
Don't we want to define this entry a little more by having at least a foot rise?
You'll have side lights and.
I don't know, I like the way it is now, to be truthful.
This big door thing.
I have a, you know, maybe reducing it, you know, a couple of feet from the width and a foot from the height will resolve the issue.
I think, I think it's, it's a really pretty house, and that's the one hang-up I have with it, really, that it's disproportionate.
So if we're reducing the size of the piers on the two sides, would that be, keep the same width, but reduce the amount of stone there, or to shrink the whole thing in?
Shrink it.
Shrink it in, keep the double doors, or we haven't agreed on that, single door?
I'd go for double door. It's, it's.
We have a split vote.
I do. I see it as, it's the gate guardian for Royal. If the hedge isn't there, you want something that you see.
It's part of the house, though. The door is not the gate guardian, the house is the gate guardian.
I see it as part of it.
Whereas the house guardian.
I think we should give the applicant some leadway. I mean, a double door in these days, you know, I mean, we're going to be.
Okay, as long as it's scaled down.
Okay, so we'll, we'll shrink the portico, we'll keep the segmental opening, we'll get some good light fixtures on it, and we'll bring the, the height of the door down as well, so.
So did we hear that the height of the portico needs to shrink, or is it sufficient just to have the width of it shrink?
I think the whole scale should.
Okay, just checking.
But we'll still allow it to rise slightly above the existing cornice line to give it some problems.
I think some definition is needed, otherwise you're going to lose it, not as well not touching.
Great.
All right, let's move on, please.
Move on. I went from page six to page five, page seven. The color proposed, not on the renderings, but on the paint chip, is still a little too yellow, so we'll reduce the, the color, not that the commission regulates color in any way, but this is a consideration for the applicant.
I'll make it a consideration, because we don't want to regulate colors, and if they really truly want to make this into French, they should mute it down, but I'll leave it up to them.
Assuming, and this, this is one area where we don't know exactly what the solution will be at the Royal Boulevard side in terms of beating the, the new setback requirement, so that could affect how this porch is going to look. If there are columns on the porch, I hear from the commission that you want to reduce the kind of historic, kind of Greco-Roman classical appearance of the columns. Are you still okay with round columns, or would you rather see anything else? There's a, there's a chance columns will go away depending on their solution, so we'll work with them on that.
I just don't want them to look like Italianate, Greco-Roman-style columns. I want them more to look like supportive posts, but I would need advice on that.
So if we condition it as, to simplify the columns appropriate to the contemporary French revival style, I think we'll know when we see it.
See us creating that element of concrete to match the, the crown on top of the, on the where the eaves are?
That the, well, you could give the, you could give the option for those to be concrete or wood, because they're, they're, either one does seem like it wouldn't be out of character, but if you'd like us to condition that it's concrete, we can add that as a condition.
Works.
It could be stone.
If they were stone, in order to read properly, they'd probably have to be heavier rather than the kind of lightness that they're shown right now.
That's okay with me, it's more the style and shape that caught.
If, if the roof were to be removed, the, the large, kind of hipped roof were removed from that element, would that change your view of its placement within the setback if it were a much lighter structure?
No, because that's a structure regardless.
Just, just a question.
All right, this is true.
Okay, well.
Okay, let's move on, please.
Moving on to the, I believe we're near the end. We're going to request cut sheets for the veneer stone, for the roof tile, and for the railing. I heard the commission's okay with a slate appearing roof. Slate does come in many different colors, you know, naturally. This looks a little brown, but I was, I thought it was going to be more of a gray-toned slate, so, is a gray-toned slate appropriate?
It's a blend, it's a blend of.
There it's a blend, there it's not.
Blend of.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work with a, a range that looks like a traditional slate toward the gray tones. That's everything that I've got.
Okay, now, the question is, do we approve it with these conditions, or you want to see it back? I'll entertain a motion on those things.
I think it's a percent. Don't you think we should see it again?
Yeah, the, before we go on, the, in the staff report, we typically include staff conditions, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, for, for things that the applicant and the owners and the architect are not proposing right now, but we've just seen so many times in other situations come back to us that we want to make it clear in the staff report that we're not approving certain things. So just to read those, and I know you don't have to vote on these, we're not going to allow any foam, styrofoam moldings or columns incorporated anywhere on the project. All of the window and door openings will be recessed and provided with, in this case it says wood sills, we made a mistake there, it'll be a precast stone sill. Vinyl windows with internal muttons should not be used, that's not an issue here. Architectural details, such as railing, sconces, entrances, should not be overly ornate, I think the commission is making sure that happens. And then we had a concern that the segmentally arched windows might come back as someone asking us to put regular square-headed windows, and we believe the segmental arch is important for this style, the goals of the design, so we're conditioning that they be segmental and that the wood windows or the windows.
And that they be part of the actual window and not a separate.
A separate piece.
A separate piece.
There's no structural division in between.
Right, we'll, we'll add that in the, we'll add that in the condition. And again, this is, these are the kinds of conditions that we are typically administering every day. The DRB is asking, it's exactly the kind of conditions that are attached to an approval with conditions for, for the, in the DRB world. So, again, it's, it's your choice, your, your decision. We believe that the project won't look substantially different than, than what you're seeing before you. The, obviously, the porch will be different, but we don't believe that will be a substantial visual difference, so we are perfectly comfortable to administer the conditions as we've read them.
Well, let's come to a conclusion on this, please. Let's make, can I have a motion? But before we go there, just in case the motion is any other way, can we, I want to elaborate on Commissioner Vidor's. If, if for some reason the board doesn't want to approve it today, we need to see a cleaner, accurate site plan, part of that condition, and also show me the grade as it relates to the street, the sidewalk, so we can see the actual mass. But with that, I'll take a motion, please. We have, either we approve it with the conditions or want to see it back. In this case.
If we have the motion, could you poll us to? The motion, could you poll us to see what, how we're feeling about it?
Let's take a motion.
Because we're new to this, you know.
Let's take a vote.
Vote, like a...
Go for it.
Well, I feel, I appreciate your comments, Ms. Reich, and I really appreciate all the hard work and sweat and toil that goes into this. However, I think since we are reviewing our first application here in a historic district and we have other things to consider, and also, you know, we know you and love you, but we, we don't have a working rapport yet because we haven't worked together, so...
And that can change.
I, I'm sure that all your design review things are, are beautiful, but, you know, we're, we need to really go through the process here, and I think we have a significant number of things to reconsider, and it seems, my gut feeling by looking at your reaction is that you're confident that you can address our concerns, so I would like to see this come back and then we'll approve it.
There you go.
Or you're returning it for, your motion is to return for redesign?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
All right. My second.
Second? Roll call, please.
Okay, there was a motion by Commissioner Vidor to have the project come back as a return for redesign with all the comments and conditions, as we spelled out earlier, and a second by Commissioner Morgan. This will be roll call. Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
And Chair, Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And when the applicant brings that back to us in perfect shape, we can move it through on the consent calendar.
Well, that's what I was getting at when I said if we can continue it. Can we do that? I know the motion is taken.
Um, we, we, because this is not really asking for more information, we would strongly recommend the motion and stay as you voted on it, and we can bring it back as a, as on the consent calendar, so if you want to pull it off and, and make some comments, you could, or you could simply approve it as submitted.
Okay.
Just, if I may, just to elaborate on that, the DRB frequently will have in cases like this where they've asked for a number of conditions, they just want to, I'll say trust but verify to sort of put words in Ms. Vidor's mouth. So they want to see it again, but because staff is confident that the applicant has met the full range of conditions that the board has put on the project, will oftentimes put it on the consent calendar, so there'll hopefully be very little discussion, just flip to and say, yes, that's what we asked for and move it forward without the extended discussion that we just had, so I think Ms. Reich is suggesting, hopefully when you see this again, that's the stat, the way you'll see it.
Okay.
And it did take a little while for the DRB to be comfortable with that as well, so this is all part of the process and we understand that.
And given that our next...
I know Franco's, I'm confident with Franco can do it. Anybody can do it, Franco can do it.
And our next meeting is our year-end wrap-up on January 24th, or beginning of the year, look back. That's going to be an evening meeting, we're going to have a lot of other things on the agenda, so it will be interesting to have this there and to show people how the process is moving. It'll be a great incitement if we can show people that design review in historic districts is a very smoothly flowing and, you know, hopefully relatively painless process for the applicant.
Can he make it by the...
I'm not sure, I'm just letting him know that that's, that's when we'll be doing it. If not, it would be the fourth Monday of February, 24th of January, I believe, is that a Monday? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Martin. But you're in the right direction.
What time is that meeting?
We haven't finalized the time, it'll probably be about six o'clock.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Being patient.
Thank you.
I'm a good supporter of the app, of course.
Okay. Does anybody need to take a break or should we move on and get rolling?
Almost done, right?
Okay, all right, planning department update, item eight, and informational brief, briefings.
Here we go. Just two recent city council hearings approve, were very interesting hearings. The house that you'll remember called the Rice House at 2096 Rimcrest Drive, built in 1993, was approved by city council unanimously with great support and strong interest in properties like this and recognition that this was indeed a very unique property and that we're not going to have a slew of, you know, 10-year-old buildings getting designated in Glendale. So that was something we weren't sure where that was going to take us. The discussion for 1770 Grandview, the house that we were proposing to be called the Jensen House in honor of Robert Jensen, was a, was a very interesting hearing. The commission, when we heard the case, had specifically asked that the applicant use the name Jensen House and then also remove an archway, a decorative archway that was over the driveway. When this went to council, there was a much deeper discussion about some of the previous alterations that had been made to the house and concern about how they impacted the historic design. So the, the council actually conditioned for alterations in addition to the removal of the arch, all of which have been performed.
Our weave come.
So if you, if you, if you drive by 1770 Grandview, you'll see that the finials on top of all the fence posts are removed.
Well, they already are.
Yeah, yeah, it's all done.
The columns on the main facade are off.
The archway is gone, the freestanding columns are removed just from the, from the historic house. There was a decision that, because they were part of the original design of the addition and kind of helped with those proportions a bit, that that would stay, but that the historic house would be brought back closer. And was there another, I think that's at the finials, the, the urns are still there and they approved those, but when I drove by...
Casa de Carmen.
Yeah, I was going to get to that. So the name was changed, which had been originally proposed by the applicants to be a different name, and the applicant did not want to use the name Jensen House, which we thought was historically appropriate, so the council proposed a name Casa de Carmen after Mrs. Ovanesian, the homeowner, and the council approved that, so the house now has the official name Casa de Carmen, as well as the other work that they approved. That is everything there. Item B is just a discussion regarding our special meeting on the 24th, and I wanted to just kind of go back over some of the ideas. I think we'll be formulating the details of this in the next few weeks through a series of emails between ourselves, but I wanted to, and now I've lost track of all of my papers in the meeting minutes. We were each going to take a role in, in this presentation. Can I borrow someone's meeting minutes? Because I just lost my, the last page of the October meeting minutes.
Here, there's one.
Thank you. So when we met in October, we started divvying up some responsibilities. We came up with a guest list, we're going to invite a number of groups to kind of come and participate if they'd like, if they have any presentations or anything to share. That'd be a great opportunity for them to do that. This includes the two historical societies in town, various real estate companies, the Chamber of Commerce, homeowners associations and groups like that. When we discussed possible chores for the commissioners, presentations, Commissioner Shire volunteered to talk about new nominations, so we can help you if you want to do that as a PowerPoint or something, where it'd be nice to have some visuals to show off the range and the beauty of the places we're designating. We'll help you put that together if you would like. Commissioner Martin offered to talk about design guidelines in historic districts, how appropriate will that be? And Commissioner Vidor volunteered to do something that wasn't listed in the minutes, so what was that?
It had to do, I think, if I remember correctly, with commercial property and incentives and, you know, how, how redevelopment and adaptive re-utes fits into our strategy, just focusing more on that.
Okay, and that could be a good segue if you cover that, you can perhaps address some of the commercial properties that are already designated. We have some statistics to suggest, you know, we're kind of residential-heavy, commercial-light in terms of our balance of designated buildings.
Is it also appropriate or could it be to make suggestions as to which ones should or could be listed?
No.
No.
That's not appropriate.
Wait a minute.
Commissioner Martin will...
Not because I like them, but because they've already been surveyed and considered to be designable.
I, I think it's best, and perhaps Alan Loomis will share with us his thoughts, but I, I think it's best for the commission to not be going there, especially in this forum, and to talk about the issue in general that we do have, you know, we do have a nice collection and a lot of them are undesignedated, but eligible.
I think the issue, Ms. Vidor, if you were to suggest your favorite properties, if they were to come to the commission, you'd probably have to refuse yourself from voting because you've already sort of suggested you are predisposed to those nominations.
Never mind.
But I, I think the subject is, is definitely good. This leaves Commissioner Morgan without any chores.
Whatever you want. I mean, basically, history is my thing, I can do anything on the history of Glendale that you're interested in or they're interested in, so.
Well, maybe pick a topic.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
Some of the historically...
Transportation.
Rock, even, trains.
Oh, I could do that in a heartbeat on that. Yeah, I could do the history of rail in Glendale. Transportation in Glendale.
Transportation in Glendale, it's, it's kind of essential to the city's history, so I feel if you include Grand Central a little bit.
Definitely, definitely.
So I think that would be great to do that. And we had talked about trying to bring a speaker in, and we haven't made any arrangements to do that. I have some thoughts that I'll run with staff to see if there are any, any people that we might come in to have some kind of outsider's view of, you know, what's going on here and what we've got, or ideas that might help us in the future as a commission, so we'll work that out and then perhaps share ideas via email. And, and then of course we'll just, we'll try to let everyone know through some, through staff presentation, know what the commission does, what we're up to, what are, what the possibilities are out there, so that it's kind of a wide-ranging discussion. The third update is the, we have selected a consultant for the Rossmoyn Historic District Survey. We also, I think I've announced this previously, but it's, it's great because we got a good price on the survey from LSA Associates, a firm based in Riverside, done a lot of work regionally, they haven't worked in Glendale to date, but we're excited to be working with them. And offsetting the cost of the survey is going to be a $10,000 grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation that we received as part of the Los Angeles County Preservation Fund, so that will actually cover over half of the cost of the survey, not including staff time. So, so that's really tremendous. We're going to be going to council in January to, oh, next week? Tomorrow night? Oh my God, we're going to council tomorrow night to, to get the appropriation approved if, if they choose to do that, so. That is the update there. Finally, Commissioner Vidor asked for an update on the status of the Brecken Library project. There is still a lot of work going on at the design level, they're, they're coming out of schematic design and ready to get into design development, and we expect that sometime during the design development phase, we're going to have our first public outreach meeting to which the commission will be invited as members of the public, and then there'll be a presentation to the commission once any input from that meeting is kind of brought into the new design. The real issue right now, there's been a lot of work done on this, but ADA access is proving to be a really difficult issue and they may be bringing in an ADA consultant to look at that, so the schedule, the timeline has kind of shifted beyond where it was originally